Regular meeting of the City Council of Birmingham is called to order. We have our invocation by Elder Elijah Weatherspoon, Pastor Zion Travelers, Primitive Baptist Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Counselor Valerie Abbott from District Three. Please stand.
Let us pray. Eternal God be thanking for this day and for your blessings. We pray now that I bless and upon this council, we ask that thou would give them thy divine wisdom as they deliberate for the well-being of the community of Birmingham as a whole and each section, each district. We pray that thou would guide them and that all of their labors will come together for the betterment and the well-being of this community. We ask now that you will provide, not only guide us, but give them strength and wisdom individually and collectively, because we'll be the benefactors, all of their deliberations if they do it for the building of your people. Grant them your wisdom, your strength, and your guidance, and we shall forever praise our name. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Call the roll, Mr. Clerk. Councilmember Abbott.
Present.
Councilmember Hoyt.
Present.
Councilmember Lundey.
Here.
Councilmember Parker. Councilmember Rafferty.
Present.
President Pro Tim Roberson.
Good morning, Mr. Clerk.
Good morning. Councilmember Scales.
Present.
Councilmember Tyson. President Austin.
Present. Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Minutes not ready from January twenty-seventh through April fourteenth. Do we have any nominations of boards and agencies?
No, sir. Have we received any? No.
Let's move on with the consideration of the consent agenda.
Okay, the consent agenda starts on page number three. And we have items seven and eight on consent. Then we skip over to page-
Item five and six are being requested to be withdrawn.
That's correct. Skip over to page seven. We have items nine and ten on consent. Page eight, we have items eleven through fourteen on consent. On page nine, we have items fifteen through seventeen on consent. Then we skip over to page twelve, and we have items thirty-one through thirty-four on consent, thirty-one, thirty-three, and thirty-four being added. Page thirteen, we have items thirty-five through thirty-seven on consent. Item thirty-six was added to the consent agenda. Page fourteen, we have items thirty-eight through forty on consent. Page fifteen, we have items forty-one through forty-three on consent. Page sixteen, we have items forty-four through forty-seven on consent, with forty-seven being added to the consent agenda. Page seventeen, we have items forty-eight, as well as items fifty through fifty-three on consent. Item forty-nine was withdrawn from the agenda. Page eighteen, items fifty-four through fifty-six are on consent. Page nineteen, items fifty-seven through fifty-nine are on consent. Page twenty, items sixty-one and as well as sixty, I'm sorry, with sixty being added to the consent agenda. And then we have addendum items. What do we got? Sixty-nine, seventy, seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three added to the consent agenda on the addendum items.
Okay.
Mr. Pro Tim.
Any members of the council wish to add or remove any items from the consent agenda? Council Scales.
Mr. President, is there anyone else that wanted to speak to the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. While I'm finding this item.
There are none.
Okay. All right, I can tell you what I'm asking for respectfully, and I know that at least I've been made aware that Counselor Rafferty has seen this, but there's a project related to some money that was moved around from Gene Reed Road. I'd like respectfully, Counselor, if you would agree with me, to meet with that party that is involved, and the reason being is-
What item?
That's what I'm trying to find, and I-
Item fifty? Fifteen.
What is it?
One, five, fifteen.
Fifteen, okay, I'm sorry. I think, 'cause I'm trying to-
Yeah, page nine.
Okay, hold on, Mr. President. All right, that's page nine? Yeah. We can remove that from consent, but I'd like to respectfully request for that to be delayed for one week, and the reason being is that that has gone out into the community about that project, meaning that was told to the Huffman neighborhood, that based on the paperwork we were given from the administration, that this project was going to happen. So I'd like to respectfully get the opportunity to talk to the person that's involved or the property that's in question, Mr. President.
All right, we will remove that one from consent. Do you have any more? Council Hoyt? You have any more, Counselor?
No, sir. Well, not at this time. I'll come back.
All right.
Yes, Mr. President, good morning, and good morning to all. Item thirty-eight, if we could take it off consent.
Thirty-eight? Page fourteen.
Page fourteen, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And like to add thirty-four to consent, and that's on page twelve.
Yeah, so it's already been added.
Oh, it's okay. Very good.
All right. Yeah, that's it.
Yeah, I think so.
All right.
Mr. President.
Councilwoman Abbott.
I just wanted to add that item thirty-five was recommended by the Budget and Finance Committee.
Okay.
I wanted to add that. Item, page thirteen. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Council Scales.
Yes, sir, thank you. Item number seventeen, I did have a question about that. If the question can be answered, then we can leave it on consent, but I did have just a little question about that.
Go ahead.
Okay. My question, Mr. President, has to deal with what this funding specifically is being used for, obviously. If I have read it correctly, I know that this is coming out of the administration's budget. Is that correct, Mr. President? Or someone can tell me?
I can speak to that, Counselor.
Okay.
This is a thirty-five-hundred-dollar check that we received from the Birmingham Foreign Trade Zone Commission. This is money to be used to promote the Birmingham's role in the foreign trade zone. So it is to be used to market the trade zone.
Okay. All right, I just wanted to know what that was, so that can remain on consent, Mr. President.
Okay.
That's all I have for now.
All right. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been marked, that's been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. There are any members of the public who wish to speak to an item that has been placed on the consent agenda marked as a public hearing? You may now approach the podium. All right, we have a mover and second. President?
President?
Yes.
Before we move on second, I would like to add items sixty-nine and seventy-
Yeah.
Seventy-one, seventy-two, and seventy-three. And seventy-four.
It's an addendum or something? Yes.
Addendum. Now, I didn't hear that they were added to consent, so I want to make sure that sixty-five and sixty-six and sixty-seven and sixty-eight are not added to consent, as well as whatever this one is. Has no number.
They're not.
Okay.
What were the other ones, Mr. President? She added all the ones that you mentioned and added seventy-four.
And seventy-four.
Sixty-nine through seventy-four.
Council Hoyt? Do you have a question?
No, I think we're fine.
Okay. All right. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Roberson, Rafferty? Rafferty? Okay, voting should be open now. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item passes. Mr. Byrne, you have a report from the mayor's office?
Yes, good morning, councilors and the mayor and the city of Birmingham. I'm going to step to the podium and make some presentations. This week is All Hazards Awareness Week. We have Denise Bell from the Flood Plane Management and Disaster Mitigation Services to give us more information on this week's activities and to receive a proclamation on behalf of the city of Birmingham. Ms. Bell, are you here? Okay. She is not here, but I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Okay. It says, "Whereas each year, the city of Birmingham faces the threat of severe weather events such as floods, tornadoes, thunderstorms, and ice storms, all of which are potentially dangerous to life, health, and property. Whereas in April two thousand and eleven, a severe storm event challenged our resilience and tested our resolve, but also united our city in our shared grief and our determination to prevent future generations from experiencing similar devastation. And whereas the city of Birmingham, with the assistance of its state and federal partners, for several years has maintained a proactive role in mitigating the damaging effects of adverse weather events to our citizens. And whereas the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA has named April tenth, April thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, as America's Prepare-It-On Day, as an opportunity for individual organizations and communities to prepare for severe hazards. Whereas the city of Birmingham concurs that a public that is well-informed on the dangers of severe weather events can improve its preparedness and reduce the occurrence of death and injury. And whereas it is essential that effective public education programs concerning severe weather systems and preparedness procedures continue for the benefit of all citizens in this great city. Now therefore, I, William A. Bell, Senior, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, joins FEMA in its national efforts to emphasize the importance of preparedness and reducing the damaging effects of adverse weather events, and do hereby proclaim the week of April twentieth through twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, as Birmingham All Hazards Awareness Week, allowing our Flood Plane Management and Disaster Mitigation Service programs to encourage our citizens to become more aware of severe weather safety measures and participate in various activities scheduled during this week in order to continue to respond with faith, courage, and strength when challenged with severe weather. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and call the sale of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, to be affixed this twenty-first day of April two thousand and fifteen, and signed by Mayor Bell."
Good morning.
Good morning.
Denise Bell, Flood Plane Administrator for the city of Birmingham. We all know that Birmingham has experienced flooding, ice storms, tornadoes, so we've moved from just having Flood Safety Awareness Week to having an All Hazard Awareness Week and actually going out to the community and encouraging our residents to prepare themselves in a joint effort to better prepare the city of Birmingham as a whole for disasters. We've seen what two thousand and eleven did, and we know that the anniversary is coming up, so we've done the physical rebuilding. Now we've got to do the social side of it, and that is to prepare our residents, to prepare the city of Birmingham residents. So in keeping with the city's commitment to Pratt City, we've significantly rebuilt the structures, infrastructure, as well as provided community amenities and future community safe rooms. This week itself will provide our community with information and skills that can better prepare them for any future events through training our residents to be first responders, not to be our fire or police, but to be there to help each other. Also, a couple weeks ago, you approved the Post Disaster Recovery Plan. That plan itself will actually give us the processes and the lessons learned that we actually can use to document for future events and put a system together to allow us to have our forms ready, to have our contractors ready, to actually have a system where we put all the information, city staff, consultant contracts, in one system, so we can actually have a great audit in the end. So we're actually putting forth a public information program to actually help our citizens and actually work better together when we have disasters. So I thank you guys, we encourage you to come out. Today, we'll be at the corner of Twentieth Street and Fifth Avenue from ten to one, giving out information on preparedness for ice events, tornadoes, flooding. Tomorrow, from four to seven, we will be at the Boutwell for the Multi-Jurisdictional Mitigation Public Meeting for Jefferson County, which each city in Jefferson County has to have their own mitigation strategies, 'cause every city doesn't have the same issue. On Thursday evening, from six-thirty to eight, we'll be at Crestline presenting to them the actual flood reassessment and to understand what their concerns are and meet their concerns. So we ask that you come out, get some good packages, get information for your constituents. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Denise. Next, this week is also designated-
Councilwoman Abbott, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, any questions?
Yes, Councilwoman Abbott has.
I wanted to ask, yesterday, someone sent me a link to go online and sign up for emergency alerts, and I wondered if we're involved in that. I know our E-911 system was supposed to be involved in it. Are we, is that on our website for people to access?
I don't think it's on our website yet. I do know that IMS was working with the Jefferson County EMA to actually get that system up and running, so I don't have the status yet, but I can check with Mr. Bettis on the actual status.
Okay, well, well, Birmingham, obviously, is on top of it, even though we don't seem to be, and they sent out a link.
Yes, ma'am.
And I went and signed up yesterday just so I could tell people whether it's easy or not, and it's very easy.
Yes.
So I would encourage, we can send out this link to anybody. I was hopeful that since the city of Birmingham's involved, that we would've gotten on it. But, you know, I understand that the news media is quick.
Yes.
But we need to be quicker.
Yes, ma'am.
So, but anyway, but there will be an alert system that you can actually go online and sign up for, and it'll send messages to your computers, all the telephones you have, all the computers you have, and they will chase you down until they find you.
Yes.
And I think that that's a good thing. And I told them I wanted an alert on everything. Now, some people may just want weather alerts. I want it all. If there's a chemical spill on the interstate, I want to know about it so I can avoid it. So that's a very good thing, because-
Yes.
You know, people may not all have computers, but I have never met a person without a cellphone. I'm sure there is one, but I haven't met them, so.
We'll discuss the rollout of it with Mr. Bettis.
Yes.
Let's get it on our site.
Well, let me say that the city is well-informed. Not only did we have a press conference, but we continuously did, did too, with Greg Silas, I think it's Coker, who is the chairman of the EMA.
Yes, sir.
And so we've done our part, and matter of fact, some of us even registered that day, including the mayor, went online and some of the news outlets, just as a part of the demonstration that we had in the emergency component in the basement. I forget, I guess, what is that, the?
The Emergency Operations Center?
Right, right, the operation. So we are, we can just, I think it's already on the website, it's called Everbridge Project. And any citizen who is interested in being alerted when there's a national disaster, catastrophe, can go online, go to Everbridge, you can put that in the computer, and it'll come up, but you all need to register. Matter of fact, I registered my wife as well. You can add your children's phone to it, because what it does, it alarms you when we have national disasters, or if there's something, you know, if there's a pileup on the highway or any of those things, you will be informed. So it behooves all of us, all the citizens, as you hear my voice, to go and register at the Everbridge site, and so that you can get registered, so you can be alarmed. They'll send out a little text message to let you know that there's a storm or that's any of those things. So we've already, we're on top of it. As a matter of fact, I think March first was the national date that we had with respect to emergencies, so it has already gone out, and we're ahead of the game. And matter of fact, the technology that we're using now is ahead of many cities in the United States and America. So I just want you to know, we're on top of it.
Tell me where it is on the website.
Well, I can't, well, I hadn't pulled it up, 'cause I'm trying to do other things, but hopefully Greg Silas will come-
Yes.
-before this, enter this meeting, and he can tell you all of that, 'cause that's his baby, and I'm gonna let him tell you about it, because we've been before the council too with respect to that. So hopefully he'll come up and give you information, and so the public can understand whether to go on the website, but it's called the Everbridge Project. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We just need to make sure it's easily searchable, we can find it on our website, 'cause I'm looking, I've looked at both of them, I can't find it. Yeah. All right. Mr. Byrne?
All right, next, this week is also designated as Parental Alienation Awareness Month. We have Kenneth Pascal with the Alabama Family Rights Association here to receive a proclamation on behalf of the city of Birmingham and to give details on the upcoming Bubbles of Love event. Mr. Pascal, are you here? And the proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas strong family relationships constitute the foundation of our community, and whereas alienating behaviors are frequently seen in high-conflict divorces, separations, and asymmetrical custody arrangements, but can and do occur in intact marriages, and whereas parental alienation is the term used to describe any number of behaviors and attitudes on the part of one parent that are designed to interfere, damage, or destroy the relationship a child has with the other parent, it's a form of abuse that causes emotional trauma to children. And whereas parental alienation deprives children of their right to freely love and be loved by both parents, their extended family, and robs children of their sense of security. And whereas mental professionals agree that the negative effects of parental alienation can follow a child into adulthood with tragic consequences, and whereas the recently published Diagnostic and Statistical Manual of Mental Disorders made several references to the dysfunctional family dynamic of alienation to be a form of psychological child abuse, and whereas approximately forty thousand children in the state of Alabama were subjected to child custody determination in two thousand and thirteen. And whereas Parental Alienation Prevention Week is intended to increase the knowledge and understanding of this problem to help Alabamians, institutions, the legal and mental health community, and leaders to better identify and combat such abusive behavior to children. Whereas in honor of Parental Alienation Prevention Week, come and show your support by taking ten minutes out of your day at noon on Saturday, April fifteenth, to blow soap, Bubbles for Love. Each bubble we blow will represent the love of our children have and should be allowed to share with both parents. Now therefore, I, William A. Bell, Senior, Mayor of the city of Birmingham, Alabama, do hereby proclaim April nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, as Parental Alienation Prevention Week, and April twenty-fifth, two thousand and fifteen, as Parental Alienation Awareness Day. And Birmingham, may encourage our citizens to observe this month with programs and activities to help prevent child abuse and provide the needs and safety of our children. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and call the sale of the city of Birmingham to be affixed this twentieth day of April two thousand and fifteen, and is signed by Mayor William Bell. Mr. Pascal?
All right, thank you. No, good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving me an opportunity to come in and share with you what I consider is one of the most important issues that we face today. As the young lady before me, she mentioned about the storms, the natural storms of Mother Nature. What we dealing with is a storm of life for our kids, so we're asking everyone on April the twenty-fifth to take time out of your busy schedule, blow bubbles, and as the bubbles flow freely, what that represents is the love that our kids have and should have, not only for mom and dad, but also for their extended family members. Sadly to say, we in a crisis, we in a storm here in Alabama. We have a high divorce rate, we have a high unwed birth rate, and many times, kids, they're torn from either their mom or dad. So what we have been doing since two thousand and nine, we started with three people in the state of Alabama blowing bubbles just to promote love, so every child in our state, our city, in our neighborhoods, will know that it's okay to love both parents, even in those situations. So we have increased from three people, we in sixty-seven cities throughout the state of Alabama. And tonight, as we prep for April twenty-fifth, we're asking everyone to come out to the Baron's baseball game tonight, it's fifty cent hot dog night. But we also, we giving away three thousand bottles of bubbles as people come into the gates. And before the first pitch tonight, we're going to ask everyone in the stadium to blow bubbles. And I think that's the most powerful message that we could send to our kids here in Birmingham is, we want you, every child in this stadium in this city, to know that it's okay to love mom and dad. And I think if we do that, we will address many, many issues that our kids face with, it's called a storm of life. So I really just want to appreciate the city's continued support over the last several years. And remember, on the twenty-fifth, even if you, if you at home on the front porch, if you out at a event, you stop by the dollar store, get your fifty cent bottle of bubbles, and blow bubbles, 'cause if President Austin is blowing bubbles, I guarantee you, someone's gonna walk up to him and say, "What are you doing?" And that's just a forty-five second dialogue, saying these bubbles represent the love for our kids. So thank you again for the city of Birmingham, you setting the standard for other cities to follow. Thank you.
All right, any questions? Okay. Also, Bike Share is coming to Birmingham in the fall of two thousand and fifteen. You say, "What is Bike Share?" This is a joint effort between Rev. Birmingham, the Regional Planning Commission of Greater Birmingham, the Community Foundation of Greater Birmingham, of Greater Birmingham and the city of Birmingham. The system will have four hundred bikes. One hundred of these bikes, bicycles, if you're from the city. One hundred of the four hundred bikes will have electric pedal assist. This will help to reduce the barriers to access such as topography, obesity, medical problems, and age. Birmingham's program will be, will make it the first city in the Western Hemisphere to use these electrical-assist bikes. Soon, you will also see Sidewalk to Cows, which will be placed in ten potential station locations within the Bike Share footprint, and encourage the public to text in comments on potential station locations. The Bike Share system is another forward-thinking program we're implementing in our forward-thinking city. Next, we have a special presentation by Mr. Edgar Weldon. Edgar, would you please come forward?
I just wanted to take one minute to say to you the appreciation on behalf of the citizens of Birmingham and the state of Alabama for your cooperation and work, and on behalf of securing the World Games to come to Birmingham. This morning, at four o'clock, the mayor, it was not four o'clock there, but it was noon time there, but four o'clock here, the mayor signed the documents for the contract between the World Games and the city of Birmingham, and so I just wanted to come and to thank and the city of Birmingham. And so I just wanted to come and to thank each of you councilmen personally, individually, and as a group for your support and cooperation and hard work on this. The mayor's been great in working with this. Mr. Austin did a fantastic job when we went to Switzerland to put in the final bid to win the Games. You've been proud of the job he did. And Scott and David and them in Russia and with the mayor and they're saying that they've had all these meetings with people. See, they're at this Federation meeting in Russia. It's the world's largest sports federation. And so all these federations there, and so the Convention Bureau and the World Games people, Scott and David and all of them, are meeting with them to encourage them to come and hold their federation, their individual championships here in Birmingham before the World Games. So we've got the potential of having fifty or a hundred events like that, the people coming. And so we're working closely with the Convention Bureau. And so we just want to thank also the mayor's staff, all of their work and coordination over the last year, the mayor's, the city's legal staff, negotiating with the World Games people. It got down to the last minute and they worked around the clock. They worked so hard to make this work out and to do it. And to thank y'all for the legal staff and all of you here and Ms. Battle and Chief Cook and all of you for your help. Thank you very much. But I just, this was a historical day to me. We've all been working on it for a year and they signed the contract this morning, so we now can move forward. So on behalf of the citizens of Birmingham and Alabama, thank you, City Council, for your cooperation in making this work as a team. And I hope we'll continue to go forward and working with everyone as a team. But thank you so much.
Counselor Abbott and Mr. Protem, I wanted to speak to you, Mr. Weldon.
No, that was, I was on the last one.
What about none wrong there?
Mr. Protem?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've known Mr. Weldon for a long time. There's only a couple of things that I've ever seen him excited about. The Alabama Sports Hall of Fame and the Brian Jordan Scholarship Bank, where we honor high school students. But I've never seen him as excited as he is today about the actual agreement being signed by a mayor to execute officially that the World Games will be here in Birmingham, Alabama, in 2021. I sincerely want to thank you, Mr. Weldon, for your leadership, the many sacrifices and investments you've made throughout the years in this community, for sports, for other civic responsibilities that you have because you care a lot about this city. I want to thank the committee, David Bink, Scott Myers, Bobby Humphrey, for their leadership and collaboration when our president was there for the big announcement. Again, you stated this city, this council, this mayor's office coming together as a team to make this possible. What we don't realize, ladies and gentlemen, is that this event is gonna have a lot of spinoffs before 2021. There will be test events now, as they are meeting in Russia with the federations and other, the Convention Business Bureau, David Garbaugh's there, that will offer other events within that time span to 2021 that will take place right here in the city of Birmingham. That's gonna be impactful. That's additional economic impact and revenue for our city. That's also an opportunity for our young people and our youth across this city to get educated on other sports outside of football and which we love. So I am just thankful and appreciative to everyone that played a part in this. And Mr. Weldon, to see the fruit of your labor now come forth and bless this community is truly tremendous. So thank you so much, sir, for your vision and support and leadership. And safe travels to our mayor and the delegation that's representing us right now over in Russia. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Most kind. Thank you very much.
Mr. Weldon, before you leave, I just want to also thank you for the work that you have done on behalf of the citizens of Birmingham and the state of Alabama. You know, this is such a unique opportunity for the city of Birmingham and for any city to win the World Games. And it's exactly what our Protem just articulated, which is that there are so many things that lead up to the World Games, and there are so many spinoffs that the city can benefit from, from having the World Games. One of the most important ones is the ability for us to really take a serious look at transit. Now, the World Games was awarded to the city with what we currently have in place and what plan we put in place specifically for the World Games. But we, as a city, are using this as an opportunity to really take a serious look at transit. Right now, we have several members from our Transportation Authority that are traveling to Jacksonville, Florida, to look at their bus rapid transit system. And they're doing that today. We have been meeting over the last several weeks to really take a serious targeted approach to solving our, some of our issues with mass transit. And the most important thing that we can do, and I think the most impactful benefit that we have from having the World Games is really having a target, a set time that we know that we're going to have the World Games here, and then having some specific goals, some measurable goals, that we can really, that will help us really get to where we want to be. And ultimately, having the World Games will help us have a serious transit system that will connect the east to the west. We have seen all the development that's taken place in Central, the Central Business District in downtown, and it's time for us to really focus more on our communities, our neighborhoods. And the best way that we can do that is provide reliable transit options to those who need it most. And with the fact that we have the Crossplex on the western side of Birmingham, and we have the airport on the eastern side of Birmingham, we have to make that investment spanned into those communities. And with the World Games being here, it helps us take that message to Washington, D.C., to get federal money to help us take that message to our state legislature, to get state money to help us build roads that will connect our communities, and most importantly, connect those who need it most to the services, the jobs, that we will be able to develop and expand because of the World Games. So when people ask, why are we making a three and a half million dollar investment in the World Games? And when the answer is, we have the opportunity now, we have a target that we know 2021, we will have the World Games here, and we have the opportunity to really take the investment that we've already seen happen in downtown Birmingham and spread that to the west and to the east and really go out into our communities and our neighborhoods, which desperately need this type of economic investment. And so I just want to thank you because I don't think the citizens really understand the impact that it will have. But as we continue, as the Protem said, as we continue to articulate what really this investment means to our communities and means to our neighborhoods, the benefit and the impact that it will have goes far beyond 2021. So I just want to thank you for having the vision, the fortitude, and the gumption to really go after something that really help impact our community in the most meaningful way that we can. So thank you, Mr. Weldon.
Mr. President. Thank you. Thank y'all.
Mr. Weldon, let me just say kudos and ditto to what has already been said. Other than the fact, I want to say that we are blessed to have a Hall of Famer in our midst this morning, Mr. Bobby Humphrey, who probably has one of the fastest families in the state of Alabama. Because all of his children run track and they're the top in the country, some even in the world. So I'm just looking forward to this event. And I thought too, for a moment, Ms. Weldon, but all the work, a lot of your work that has been done in this city has had a tremendous impact. And so we're very grateful for you and your interest in empowering young people because I think that's, much to be said about that. And certainly, when we read the newspapers, we need more of our young people engage in sports because it teaches more than just a game of the collective, but they can grow individually too towards some personal expectations. So we really do appreciate that. And my last comment is to our wonderful, magnificent president, Jonathan Fitzgerald Austin, the one that his father said, "The Lord is well pleased with." And so, and you talking about the west side. I said, "Lord, a man after my own heart." So I'm just here to tell you, you got juice, my friend. And I don't want, y'all, I hope y'all recording this because he has said publicly, now, he said it to me privately, but he has said publicly that we gonna take care of the west side. And I don't think, that's right. You see, all right? You see it? We got witnesses.
And the east side.
And the east side. But I'm concerned about the west side, okay? And I said, "Wow." So I want you to know, I appreciate that. And I know that he's gonna take care of that. He's a man of his word. And so we can expect him to take care because I'm still waiting on the development of Crossplex, you know, and all points in between because these people gonna be coming from other country. They don't need to, they don't need to be coming from third world country to another third world country. They need to be coming to a more progressive country. Okay, so we got to clean it up. So I'm talking to the council too. We got to clean it up. So thank you so much, Mr. President. Thank you. It's a great presentation. Best one I ever heard. Thank you.
Thank y'all. I want to thank Scott Myers and David Bink and Steve Mistro, who've all worked on this very hard, and the Convention Business Bureau. And they've been very, very supportive. And Jim Smothers, his staff have done a great job too. So thank y'all again. You're kind.
Thank you.
And finally, we have a video presentation from Counselor Scales. That concludes our report. From Rafferty?
Yeah.
From Counselor Rafferty.
Yep.
Thank you.
You threw me off there for a second. Actually, if you're ready to run the Air National Guard piece, I'm ready. Ryan.
On April 19th, 1961, two E-26 Marauders were shot down over Cuba. Pete Ray, Riley Schamberger, Wade Gray, and Leo Baker died that day. Pete Ray is the only service member whose body was ever recovered.
One of the most proud periods of our ninety-three years of history that started as the 135th Observation Squadron. Obviously, I'm talking about the Bay of Pigs invasion.
Colonel Scott Grant, Vice Commander of the 117th Air Refueling Wing, in partnership with the Southern Museum of Flight, held a memorial banquet to honor the survivors of the invasion and their families. The veterans and their loved ones gained recognition there as special guests and shared memories of their time in service and of the friends they lost. Reporting for the 117th Air Refueling Wing, I'm Mayorman Jim Bentley.
Counsel, this resolution is long overdue. These gentlemen passed away in 1961, partnering with the Cuban exiles to fight for their freedom. Pete Ray's body was seized and left in a freezer for many, many years and was not recovered by his family until the late 1980s? 1979. And was laid to rest here in Birmingham. And this is an honor that we have not recognized by the city in many, many years. The Air National Guard here has recognized, and Colonel Grant, if you'll come forward, please. They have intentionally recognized these four gentlemen for their sacrifices on behalf of the city and on behalf of the state of Alabama. And I think it is time that we honored these four gentlemen. I'm going to attempt to read this resolution, which I have framed to be hung at the Air National Guard. And it reads, "Whereas members of the armed services from the city of Birmingham and the state of Alabama who have served so valiantly and honorably in wars in which this country's freedom was at stake, as well as in the preservation of peace and peacetime, deserve a special tribute. And whereas attended to such concern and in full accord with its longstanding traditions, the Council of the City of Birmingham is justly proud to honor four members of the Alabama Air National Guard who died in the Bay of Pigs invasion of Cuba in 1961. And whereas Leo Baker, Wade Gray, Raleigh Schamberger, and Thomas W. Pete Ray were four members of the Alabama Air National Guard who were killed, they volunteered, by the way, to fly in support of the Cuban exiles attempting to overthrow Fidel Castro during the ill-fated, Central Intelligence Agency-backed Bay of Pigs invasion on April 19th, 1961. And whereas after the failed attempt of this invasion, the remaining flight and maintenance crews returned to Birmingham from the secret base in Nicaragua. Researchers uncovered information about the role of the Alabamians. And in 1999, the CIA declassified critical documents and posthumously awarded Baker, Gray, Schamberger, and Ray the Distinguished Intelligence Cross, the agency's highest award for bravery. And whereas on April 17th, 2015, members of the 117th Aerial Refueling Wing of the Alabama Air National Guard and the 106th Air Refueling Squadron honored the Bay of Pigs veterans with a memorial service. A seven-man honor guard positioned on top of the hill where Ray is buried fired their rifles in a salute of a rifle volley to the four men. And whereas this momentous occasion presents an excellent opportunity for this council to recognize and pay tribute to each of these airmen who served with honor and valor and lost their lives in the line of duty, no greater love has any man than this that he laid down, his life for his country." I'm sorry. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Council of the City of Birmingham, with Mayor William A. Bell, Senior, concurring does hereby salute the life of Leo Baker, Wade Gray, Riley Schamberger, and Thomas W. Pete Ray for their patriotic service and ultimate sacrifice adopted this 21st day of April, 2015, at my recommendation. I move the item.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
I move the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Colonel Grant.
Counselor Rafferty, Mr. President, members of the council. It is my honor as a Vice Wing Commander of the 117th to accept this resolution, to accept this resolution in memory of the ultimate service that went unrecognized up until 1999. And on behalf of those four fallen airmen and their families who cannot be with us today, thank you very much.
Thank you, counsel.
Thank you. Counselor Rafferty, rather, I want to thank you for posthumously honoring those that have served our country. And that's truly an honor to do that. I want to know if, I know the family members are not here and the colonels might have stepped out, but will their, the resolution be able to provide each family with a copy of it for their record? Have you already put that in the plan? I just thought that'd be great that each family received that resolution.
Yes, sir. And the biggest thing is the wall of memory at the Air National Guard. And then we'll make sure that every single one of the families have a copy as well.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. One final thing before we move on with the agenda. Mr. Silas is here. And I did want to make, and if you would come, Mr. Silas, real briefly. And as he's coming, I did just speak with Ms. Sharp, and that link to Everbridge, Counselor Hoyt and Counselor Abbott has just been added to our website.
That's true.
It wasn't there last night.
So she's just added it just in the last few minutes, since we've been talking about it. So she's listening and they on top of it. But, Mr. Silas, I think there's just one question Counselor Abbott had was regarding, how do we access, how do we get to that site or that, how do we get there? And I believe we've just answered it, so.
Yeah, are you tied in with the what's going to go on our website? Will there be a big splash that says emergency?
It is in process of being put on the council's website and the city's website. And it will be where they can link to And it will be where they can link to the program and register for the public side, which gives them everything from emergencies like tornadoes to floods to whatever issues that they choose to, to be notified of.
Well, even though it wouldn't, it wouldn't have made any difference. I spent six hours on Sunday with no power and it made me think about all of those people who lose their homes in tornadoes. And we know we're in tornado alley, so it was a big deal. And then for, you know, the news media to get a jump on us really irritated me because, you know, we have come up with this plan, you, not we, but you, but we, the city.
You've fully supported me, I appreciate it.
And, and, you know, I just thought, why do I always have to find these things out from the news media? So, I just want us to be on the lead.
Right, and the Everbridge program, which it's a joint project between Jefferson County EMA and City of Birmingham nine-one-one, is fully up and running. We have over eight thousand people signed up and we are seeing that increase every day. And it is gonna be on our websites, it is on the Jefferson County website at this point. And they can sign up. The only thing that you can't opt out of is a tornado warning, which obviously everyone should get a tornado warning. But you can also get, we are tying the flood level gauges into the program so that if you have flood level gauges in your area, it'll give you that notification. And they also have places in there where they can put in if they are homebound or if they have certain needs like oxygen or something. So, we would get those notifications that those people need to be seen to.
Well, and another point that I thought was important, since we have so many residents with diabetes, one of the other things is you can note if you have medications that have to be kept cold, obviously if you lose your power for a long, long time, that that'll be a problem. So, I was encouraged by that. So, it's, it's very interesting.
And, and it's, you know, every day they're updating and we're getting, we're keeping up with their current software. So, there's more and more options that are coming out. It, it's, it's a really good program that most of the major cities in the nation are starting to use. So, it's, it's, I think it really will be developed and kept up to date.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Clerk, we're ready for the first item.
Item one on page two. A resolution relative to the application of LaShonda Tucker for an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at First Avenue Marketplace, fifty-three oh five First Avenue North, Suite A, Birmingham, in the hearing of all her supporters.
And item two.
Item two, a resolution relative to the application of LaShonda Tucker for a lounge retail liquor Class Two license to be used at First Avenue Package Store, fifty-three oh five First Avenue North, Suite B, Birmingham, in the hearing of all her supporters.
Councilor Hoyt?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a public hearing. Is the owner, applicant here? Good mornings, for the record, if you would state your name and address and what are you planning on doing here?
Good morning. Thank you for having me. My name is LaShonda Tucker. The address of the business is fifty-three oh five First Avenue North. I actually had it subdivided, so I had to pull a building permit to divide it up to have a package store as well. So, one side is gonna be a marketplace, which is more like fresh fruit, things for the community that they don't have in that area. And the other side would be a package store, which was pre-existing before, so.
Okay. If you have a seat on the front, is there anyone to speak for against this item? Detective Patterson, I'm sorry, will you get a police report?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, there was a false alarm report made at fifty-three oh five First Avenue North and that was on February the fifth of two thousand and fifteen.
Okay, alright. Anyone to speak for against this item? Any member of the council would like to speak to this item?
Need a motion?
Well, do we need to read the neighborhood?
We just need a motion.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Alright.
Alright, go ahead, counsel.
It's been, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I don't have the neighborhood report with me. But we did review, let me, let me just say that all these items have been vetted in the Public Safety Committee and we read the report from the neighborhood at that time. And hopefully my staff will listen to me so they can bring me out the rest of the report. But I don't have it here this morning. Okay.
Were they in favor of it?
Uh, I think they were. And it came out of the committee with no recommendation because we didn't have a quote on that day. Okay?
So, you're recommending it then?
I'm recommend, well, I think the council can vote on it.
I mean, your committee. Didn't you hear it yesterday?
No, I did not. No, I didn't think we need to hear it again. So, we can move, either move the item today.
Oh, it's, the item is before, so are you ready to vote?
Right, I'm ready. It's in your hands, Mr. President.
Alright. Item one and two.
Vote, it should be up.
Okay, Mr. President, that vote should be up. That item passes, next item.
Should be item three. A resolution relative to the application of Mini Martin West Incorporated for an off-premise beer and wine license to be used at Mini Martin West, thirteen twenty-four Bessemer Road, Birmingham, in the hearing of all her supporters.
Councilor Hoyt?
Uh, thank you. This is again a public hearing, is the applicant present? If you would, for the record, state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Carolyn Tucker. The address is thirteen twenty-four Bessemer Road.
Can you tell us what you plan on doing here?
Um, we bought a pre-existing gas station. We're basically just opening it back up and conducting business under a new name.
Okay. Okay. Detective Patterson, can you give us a police report?
Mr. Chairman, for thirteen twenty-four Bessemer Road, there were no incident reports.
Okay, alright. If you have a seat on the front row, that person's here to speak for against this item? Okay. If you all would come to the podium. Um, if you just line up on your right-hand side, I mean, with your left-hand side, yeah. Okay, you have three minutes, ma'am.
Thank you.
You can state your name.
Hello, my name is Neanna Steele, representing District Eight. And I would like to say hello to all of our honorable councilmen and women. And I would like to first bring recognition to the great city of Birmingham. I am, I have been born and raised in this city and I continue, want to continue to stay here. My issue is that we do not, we say, we say no to a couple of issues. We do not want another liquor store in our community. But there are some things we do say yes to. We do say yes to hazardous awareness month because those are things that directly affect our, affect our community. We do say yes to the World Games coming to Birmingham. And like Mr. Hoyt spoke on, we need to revitalize our communities and bring things that are lasting in our communities that makes our younger generation want to stay in our communities and want to be a part of the Birmingham city, not to move away, to stay here. We have a community school in that, in District Eight that we fought to keep standing here before you today. We fought to keep that community school. I was a product of that community school. I'm a product of the Birmingham city school system and its HBCUs. Another liquor store in our community continued to destroy our community. Ensley, that community has a very high crime rate. I know because I lived there and I listened to the gunshots myself. I know this. Yes, someone could come up here and say what the crime rate is, but I listened at the community meetings and our police department states that yes, our citizens are afraid to go outside after a certain hours. We have a retired mayor living in our district. We want to keep our district surviving. A liquor, I look at all the items, items one, two, three, four, five, and six. Everybody wants to be approved for a liquor license. Why can't we bring better projects to our communities? We cannot bring a thorough, third-world community over here to this community if we do not stand for something. And we say yes to some things, but there are some things that we are going to say no to. We have community kids walking to the community school that we fought for. They do not need to have the curiosity sparked to say what's in that store. Yes, you may sell fruit, yes, you may sell chips, but in the summertime it gets hot and in our communities, our children want to walk and that gives them frivolous activities to do. And that is where I stand. We say no.
Miss Steele, Councilor Abbott has a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I wanted to ask you, what is it about this specific location, thirteen twenty-four Bessemer Road? Have incidents occurred at that business?
It's a hangout spot. It's a hangout spot.
So, but people are hanging out there?
Yes, frivolous activity.
Is there crime going on there or is it just a place where people linger?
It's a place where people linger. They linger there, walking, random times of the night. It's just completely unacceptable. We have children that walk to school. They are gonna be in summer school. They, they don't need to, we have, within a ten-mile radius, we have enough liquor stores. Do we really need another one?
Is the school nearby?
Yes, it's probably like three blocks away, not even that, two blocks. It's by a bus stop, I know that.
Okay. Well, you know, the reason I'm asking these questions is we have a limited number of reasons that we can deny a liquor license or a beer and wine application. And just so you'll know, this isn't an application for a liquor store. This is an off-premise beer and wine license.
Beer, wine, which is like liquor, right?
No, liquor is liquor and beer and wine.
But it's a substitute.
But anyway, we do have a limited number of reasons. So, we need to hear the actual reasons that people are concerned about this particular location. And that's the reason, that's the reason for the questions.
In this particular location, we, we, this is Ensley, speaking real to you, this is Ensley. This is a community where we do have a lot going on. We don't agree with having another liquor package store in the community. That's just where we stand as a community. That's just where we stand.
Thank you, Chair.
But we have a whole panel of people that would like to speak on this issue, though.
Right. And they are calling me on the time. But let me just give you the, the five reasons, I think it's seven reasons why you can deny a liquor license. That it creates a nuisance, circumstance clearly a detriment to which would adversely affect the public health, safety, and welfare of an adjacent resident neighborhood, violation of application zoning restriction regulations, an individual applying for a license has been, has prior conviction involving the use of alcohol or controlled substance, the proximity of a business, of the business to a school or childcare facility and the business hours operating will create a harmful environment for the children, the traffic congestion created by the licensing of the proposed location will be, will endanger others. And I think seven here says any other reason that poses a risk. Okay? So, that's what we need to be talking about when we come for the podium and how it affect the community. Because that's what the law requires that we consider when we deny a license. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Frances Fox. I'm a resident of Bellevue Heights, eleven eleven forty-seventh Street, Ensley. And I too confer with the previous speaker that we do not wish to solicit any more businesses that patronize any type of alcohol sales, as she stated, and we confer that there are children who are victims of these facilities and we want to limit those services. Also, the applicant did come to our neighborhood meeting and we strongly encouraged her to decline the idea. And her demeanor was really a little bit what we considered offensive. So, we feel that she may not have given us the opportunity to really accept her proposal. We thank you for listening to us and we hope that you will consider declining her offer.
Next.
Good morning, my name is Angela Steele, residing in Bellevue Heights. We're talking about the lady that wants to open up her business. First impression is your last impression, how she came about us, approached us, very ugly. So, I pretty much well judged on that. And she also came back. What her objective is or whatever, I don't think it's good, but that's my opinion. But if she does, we'll wait and see. Because I just don't feel like it's good for the children, children high in traffic there. We got daycares down there. High in crime, children, we got plenty of children in the neighborhood that's looking for something to get a hold of. I mean, anxious. I mean, I don't feel like it's a good idea to put that there. But, you know, if it is, we're just waiting to see. Because her first impression is gonna be your last. Thank you.
Next.
Good morning, counsel.
Morning.
Johnny Gunn, nine fifty-three Forty-Fifth Street West. On behalf of this item, just like to say that, yeah, we, the community of Bellevue Heights, we, we voted or suggested that, you know, the license be denied. One reason why I voted or decided it should be denied is because there's a church, you can just about throw a rock over there to the church, they have a daycare. There's a daycare to the right of it on Bessemer Road. It's a couple of blocks. I'm, I'm not sure on the distance, it's an extra distance, but it's, it's right, very close in the vicinity. And like I say, Brown Elementary School. I'm not sure on the distance, but it's pretty close. So, that was my reason for actually going against it.
Mr. Gunn, Ms. Abbott, Councilor Abbott has a question for you.
Mr. Gunn, do, do children walk to school past this location or walk to the daycare?
Oh, yeah. If they, most of them, it's, it's right within the community. And then, then some of them are not. Owned down from it, yeah, they, they come across Bessemer, Bessemer Superhighway, Bessemer Road.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Olivia Gray. And I also live in the neighborhood. I feel that we have enough beer and wine locations in that neighborhood. And I think, I will just make mine brief. I reject the idea of having another beer and wine store in that neighborhood.
Okay, next.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have a missing house because I do have an instinct impediment. But I am a resident of the Bellevue Heights neighborhood. I've lived there over twenty years. I have seen and tried in our neighborhood. Luckily due to a lot of unfortunately, undeserved things being allowed to come into our neighborhood. There is an ABC store right up in Pasco West. You can buy anything up there, you can buy anything, beer, wine, or whatever that you want. And we do not need any more alcoholic, married, strangers in our neighborhood. To me, this is one thing that would encourage our young people to get things that they don't need, that they cannot buy at the store. And we don't need that. We encourage anything that's gonna be of progress and help our neighborhood from a seed and a positive direction, but not anything that's going to hurt, bring it down. but not anything that's going to help bring it down. Any more alcoholic members in that neighborhood would not be needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good morning. I don't live in that neighborhood, I frequent that neighborhood. And, um, for years I protested against Jesus and all, um, not to have a liquor license. And it seemed like my protests went unheard. I look up a couple of weeks later, liquor store in business, liquor being sold and everything. And I just want justice done, and I pray the face that was up there trying to get the license is the real owner of the business. That's what I pray, that little pretty face was up here, I hope you're the true owner, because I've been down the road before. Now, if she the real owner, I would love to see a black-owned business. Sure was, because you know some of them other businesses that we denied, like they got them licensed on later, and I'm still protesting in front of them store, because when the body hit the ground, they don't know nothing. Me speaking no English, but we speak good English when it come down here to get these licenses. And I hope it don't turn into money talk, and y'all know the other word, walk. So let's don't use no discrimination, you know how we don't want gambling in Alabama, but we gambling churches every weekend for money. You know that thing we call bingo? Yeah, it's still gambling. We gambling the church, and I'm a part of the church. Just want justice done, you know what I mean? Because I'm gonna do a little spiritual investigation, and I hope Jesus ain't behind the scene.
Before I ask the, um, the Council to, um, to chime in, let me just read the neighborhood report. The Bellevue Heights Neighborhood Association met on, uh, February the, the tenth, two thousand fifteen, voted in reference to the license application. Uh, the neighborhood regarding the granting of this license are indicated that there were twenty-nine in attendance, eleven opposed, zero support. And, um, they wrote on this, uh, document that the overpopulation of beer and wine stores, uh, is their reason for opposition, and, uh, signed by the Vice President. Um, I just happen to live in the neighborhood, um, and what they may not have said, uh, I want to be clear about, uh, what this place really means. Uh, because, uh, it is a eyesore. If you go right there right now, somebody's washing cars, somebody doing all kind of stuff on this site, the grass is not cut. Um, you know, and so it's a nuisance. It really is a nuisance. And there is a lot of loitering, and we got loitering laws that speak to that. And so, uh, while the place is not necessarily operating as a, um, as a service station, uh, it is a property that is out of control, and we need it to come in control and compliance. And right now, that's not what we have, so I want the Council to be clear. Uh, because I live in that neighborhood, I see it, and it's, uh, really a blight on the community. And, uh, and it's been, uh, it looks like it's in disrepair, uh, at best, potholes on the property. And so, there's gonna be an influx of traffic in this area. Um, the egress and, and, uh, um, uh, to the, to the property is gonna be an issue with us, uh, because you come off a tight road, uh, you know, there's a stop sign, and, and so there's nothing to kind of warn folk, you're gonna make this turn into the property if you don't enter it from Bessemer Super, uh, Highway. So it, it creates a congestion for, for traffic, uh, in that particular area. Uh, but I just want you to know, uh, that it meets, in my estimation, uh, it, traffic congestion and the fact that, um, it is a nuisance, uh, in its present state, it is. And that's what I want to say, and, uh, we're here from Council, anyone who wants to speak to this issue, from the Council. Council Abbott?
Um, I did want to ask the applicant if you could come back up for a second. Um, can you tell us what the business hours of operation will be and what days of the week you'll be in business?
Yes, ma'am, we will be open every day from, um, six AM until maybe about ten or eleven PM. We're not sure on the closing hours yet. But, um, I have this to say. The reason why I sound so nervous every time I stand here is because I feel like it's a direct salt on my character. I've been, um, I was born and raised in Birmingham, Alabama, I've been here all my life. And I am the face of this business, just like I've been the face of many other businesses that I've had before. No one that knows me directly, whatever in their life described me as this person that you all are making me out to be, the neighborhood and Stephen Hoyt. And I feel that from the first meeting, it was already stacked against me with Sherri Lewis, honestly. And I'm speaking respectfully in saying this, but I will defend myself. Um, Jay Robison, his wife was my cheerleader coach for many years. She would tell you, I was an honor student, graduated number eight in my graduating class. I am not this person. So, all of this, talk about this and nuisance and all of this, I went back to the Neighborhood Association meeting, not only did I type up a report addressing every concern that they had the first time, because the first time I went, I wasn't allowed to speak. Everyone attacked me. I said three hours in the first Neighborhood Association meeting, watching how everyone else was treated. They went up there, they spoke. If anyone had a question, they raised their hand, they were addressed, they got a chance to answer. That was not the way I was treated in this Neighborhood Association meeting. Everyone attacked me. Even when I went back the second time to clear things up, oh, I was treated much more ruly than the first, which is why I came prepared with a paper about all of their questions and concerns they had, because I knew that I wouldn't be allowed to speak. So, all of these concerns, the street vendors, they're not legal paying tax citizens. They're not. So as long as no one there, that's what they're gonna use the parking lot for. They're gonna do illegal activities out there. They're gonna wash cars, they're gonna sell stuff. But if you have someone that's paying taxes inside of this convenience store that's watching the property, have security measures to assure that nothing is going on outside of what shouldn't be going on in this neighborhood. And schools, the only school in that neighborhood is Brown Elementary, which is very far away from our store. Our store is on Bessemer Superhighway, the Sunoco. That store is used for people to cut through to get to the neighborhood to avoid traffic. Anybody that's been down that road know that I am not lying today. This is the God honest truth. That store is used for people to cut through, to get home, to avoid the traffic on Bessemer Superhighway. Now, all of these other concerns they have, I addressed right here. I also brought papers today, the same papers that I gave to them, I brought them for you all to pass out. It's dated for the Neighborhood Association meeting, it's still inside of Bellevue Heights Neighborhood Association meeting. So, um, I don't know. I own another business also, which was the convenience store, located right next to a daycare. My daughter actually attended school at this particular daycare. They would tell you, not only was I a great business owner who followed the laws when it comes to selling tobacco, alcohol, all of that. I cannot control if people want to buy beer, alcohol, wine, no one can stop that. That is at the discretion of the people who wanna drink, who wanna take part in these things. Only thing that I can do as a responsible business owner is make sure that I'm following the laws. I'm making sure that people who are old enough to buy alcohol, those people are the ones that I'm allowed to buy through proper identification check.
Ms., Ms. Tucker, if you could wrap it up, because I've
Okay, also, last thing, this store is one of the oldest stores in the neighborhood that has always maintained a beer and wine alcohol license off-premise. Never any problems, never any violations, any of that. But it's more than seven stores around us, some new, some belonging to people who are not from, born, or raised in Birmingham, Alabama. So, I mean, that's all I have to say.
And just, oh, no, don't, listen, can't do that, sir. Listen, we do not have any, we're not gonna have that. Come on. And my last comment, um, Council, because I want to be very clear. I have conducted, um, the committee, uh, with balance and fairness. I suggested to the young lady to go back to the community to see if there was some, uh, some common ground. That's why she went back the second time, um, because that's not the first time we've done that. And sometimes the neighborhood might have agreed to some things. But I always think that it is one's disposition that can either make it a good visit or a bad visit. And, um, I don't know, ended the proceedings that happened, but I was there the night she was there. Um, I wasn't there when she returned, but I was there the first night that she was there, and I can tell you, I was not pleased with her disposition. Now, that's, that's, that's the truth. But, um, we're not gonna get into any character issue, because the issue here is whether or not, uh, this is gonna be a good business for the neighborhood. And, and, and then, and what I can see and what I have observed, it's not. You know, um, if, if indeed, uh, she is the face of the business, um, you already know that there's gonna probably be some issues there. Um, because you got to do more than just bring a business to a community, but a business has to be a complement, uh, to the city. Now, if this work in Hoover, and this work in Mountain Brook, you know, if I went to preach, I'd say something else, but I'm trying to taper, uh, my comments. But it works everywhere else but Birmingham. Birmingham, you know, you say bring your liquor, bring your waste, bring your everything to Birmingham, but it don't happen in Hoover, doesn't happen in Mountain Brook, doesn't happen in Homewood. But you telling me it's the law when it comes to Birmingham that you can let all this mess come in your community? Well, I don't agree. I don't agree on many levels. But, uh, it is what it is, and this Council's gonna do what it needs to do, uh, with respect to that. Uh, but I, my vote, because I have observed this business and the one who says she represent this business, and it's not a good practice for me. And, uh, Mr. President, I turn it over to you, we can vote it up or down. But that's where I am on this, and I'm telling you, um, it's not gon', it's not good. You know, it ain't the first time I've given a forecast, okay? And when I have given forecast, people get killed. I'm just here to tell you. That's what I see in this. Because it's gonna be out of control. Would you want to speak?
Thank you, and, um, I'm glad the neighborhood has the definitions now so they can better understand the decision going forward of the Council, whichever way it goes. We are bound by the seven definitions that Council Hoyt spoke, and the evidence has to be presented in an overwhelming manner to justify the Council's denying of a liquor license. Historically, there's been this type of business at this location, and a lot of the problems that we're implying can result from the business opening back up. There's no evidence that that, those problems are gonna exist. If they do surface, then we have to, we have to deal with them. Um, the conduct that's on the vacant property now, we cannot imply that it's going to happen or continue after the new business owner comes in, because that business owner has stated whether or not we're having an issue with an attitude here and attitude there, has been presented that they are going to try to overcome those problems. And so, um, for this, Council, I have to follow the letter of the law because that's what we're charged to do up here. And, um, I just wanted to make it clear that if the proper evidence is presented at the proper time, then there's justification for revocation, but at this point, I just did not see in what was presented, strong enough evidence by the state law to justify denial.
Councilor Abbott?
Yes, I wanted to, uh, ask a question. I think it was Mr. Gunn who said that there was a daycare across the street. Mr. Gunn, are you still here? I can't see you. Is, um, is there, I mean, I, what I want to know is the proximity of daycares. If you could come back up since you, you were the only one who actually said that there was a daycare. I am interested in the locations of daycares nearby, because that is, um, you know, that would be of concern to me.
Uh, yes, uh, I was talking about that there's a church, uh, some lines for road leading coming right down to the property. It's, uh, I can't think of the name of the church right now. They, they, they have a daycare, or they had a daycare. And the other daycare that I was talking about is on Bessemer Road.
So how far away are these daycares from this facility? Are they a block? Are they right across the street? Are they three blocks? Because we have already heard that the school isn't too nearby.
Yeah. I would say the daycare, one of them that on Bessemer Superhighway is, uh, two blocks, two and a half blocks. So. You know what you get? The only thing I can think of right now is, it's right down by the Exxon service station, just on the other side of the road.
Okay, well, I, I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but I wanted to know, because, you know, we have a clear uh, number of things that we can consider, and, you know, personality conflicts are not one of the things we can consider. So we need to consider some of the things that the law says we can consider. And daycares and schools are those things, and churches are not. So, I just, since you had mentioned it, wanted to ask, so thank you.
I have no problem with, with the personality, you know, that's, that's fine. But, uh, and I was really addressing, like I said, the church has a daycare. I mean, it may not, it's not, I guess it's not considered a daycare, but it has a daycare. Uh, but there is an official daycare, I'd say two and a half, three blocks, on the same side of the street that the property is located.
Okay, thank you.
Council Skiles?
Thank you, Ms. Protem. I do want to say this, because, uh, a part of the discussion I saw it in the hall, and that, I don't think that that would give, uh, uh, proper justification for a vote. I'm gonna abstain, but I did want to say this, um, because I, I, I see this being on two sides. I'm hearing something that if it occurred that way, then it's unfortunate. But I will say that Council Hoyt has been a very strong advocate about certain type of businesses being in that area. Uh, so that's no reflection on you, ma'am, at all. I think he's been very consistent about the kind of businesses. Uh, and, and so it has nothing to do, uh, and I say it in, in, with a humble spirit. It has nothing to do with other external factors. I started to be very frank and said what it is, okay? But, but he's been very consistent in anything that has beer and wine and that kind of thing, because I always say this, the Council member knows what the people are saying in their district. And that's what all of us are supposed to be here to do. Um, I see you being a young woman, and however this turns out today, uh, I hope you don't give up, that, that, that you will take this as an opportunity and not an obstacle. You see what some of the situations that have been brought to your attention, even if you don't like it. You get up, you try again. But I just wanted to say that, because I know how Council Hoyt feels about his district, and to be very honest with you, if it were to be in my district, uh, don't know all the facts now, okay, because I wasn't in here for the facts. But I'm particular myself, because if you have a wrong, uh, my sister always says, right ain't never wrong nobody. But if you see certain things, it's been a certain way, at some point, you gotta go an extreme right to make it more balanced than it's been in the past. So I wanted to say that, Council Hoyt, to you, because, uh, I know that you have been always, uh, in that vein, and you ain't doing nothing new, you know, and it's not against any one person. So I wanted to say that, because I think I would be dishonest in my approach to participate fully by a vote, and I didn't hear all sides of it, I'm just going by what I've heard since I've been here. But nevertheless, I hope that that doesn't make you give up, regardless to how it goes today, because I don't know, okay? Thank you. Thank you, Ms. President.
Ms. Protem?
Uh, thank you, Ms. President. Um, if you don't mind, Ms. Chairman, what's the incident report? I, I, I wasn't here, I was actually in the little boy's room. Can you give me the incident report?
Councilor, this business has been closed, and therefore there have not been any incidents reported during the last six months.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Ms. President, we turn it over to you.
Ms. President, we turn it over to you.
Okay. Let me say this before we vote. You know, as Chairman of Public Safety for the last four years under the last term, we, I had an opportunity, along with the Public Safety Committee, to hear many different cases that come before the council. And in every instance that we denied a license, the cities, the cities' actions were upheld in court. And it was because of several different factors, but one of the main ones, the, the only one that really mattered in court, was one of those seven different, seven different reasons to deny a license. Based on the information that I've heard today, and the, from the, just from the community, looking at, at all the factors, I do see there's reason for us to deny this, this application. There are seven things that we have to deny it, but of those seven, I see at least two, possibly three. One being the, the adverse effect that this business could have to the adjoining or adjacent residential neighborhood. Two, any other reason that poses a risk to the community. But the third one possibly would be its proximity to a school or childcare facility. But of those three, I believe the two that I mentioned would be sufficient for us that were cited, would be the, the adverse effect to the adjoining residential neighborhood. I understand that we cannot hold the current applicant to the activities that took place prior to this applicant applying for it. However, we also know that the operation of a business, or the establishment of a business in a community, in a neighborhood, that would cause an adverse effect to that community is something that we can deny a license for. So I, I believe that we have sufficient evidence to deny the application, and Mr., I'm, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm with you, and I believe that we're ready to vote.
Thank you, Counsel.
We're ready to vote.
I need a motion, Counsel.
You have a move, and, uh, we have a move in a second. This, this just, the motion is-
Always to approve, but.
I made, I think I made the motion.
The, the motion is before us to approve the application, so if, to, to approve it, we vote yes; to deny it, we vote no.
Ms. President, I move approval.
All right, it's before us. Ready to vote, Ms. Flot.
Okay, thank you. All right, voting should be open. All right, that vote should be up.
That item passes. One abstention from Counsel Scales. Next item.
No, it does.
It, it fails with one abstention from Counsel Scales. Next item.
Should be item four.
All right.
A resolution rebuttal to the application of Thomas Martin Incorporated for an off-premise beer and wine license to the unit Thomas Martin, 1101 Bankhead Highway West, Birmingham and Hingham, Boston, PA.
Mr. Hoyt?
Motion.
Motion.
And we need a motion.
Okay.
Ms. President, I move approval.
Sir.
Abbott, Roberson. Counsel Hoyt? All right, well, Detective Patterson, come and give us our report.
Ms. Chairman, we have an off-premise beer and wine license for Thomas Martin, 1101 Bankhead Highway West. Mr. Chairman, in the past six months, there were six wanted persons that were arrested at this location. There was an unclassified death, criminal mischief, a person with dangerous drugs, and a theft of property. Again, ten incident reports for this address at 1101 Bankhead Highway West.
Okay. Is the applicant here? State your name and address, and what are you trying to do here?
My name is Akbar Bhamani, and the address is 1101 Bankhead Highway West, Birmingham, Alabama, 35204.
Okay. All right, for the benefit of the public, let me just read you the neighborhood report, and then we'll ask if we have persons to speak for, against this item. Your line up on my left, I mean, on my right, your left, all right? This is the Thomas Neighborhood Association met on February the second, I mean, the third, 2015. Vote in reference to above-named license application. The concerns of the neighborhood regarding the granting of this license are indicated as follows: thirteen in attendance and thirteen supported. And this is a, a new owner, I believe. Aren't you a new owner?
Yeah.
Okay. And also, just for, for orientation purposes, this is right there where the trucks stop, and so some of the activity has been because, you know, the trucks, you know, they bring their own element into the community. What we've asked him to do as a committee is to increase his lighting, to put some cameras and those kinds of things, what have you. But anyone here to speak, you can have a seat on the front. Anyone here to speak for, against this item? Anybody from council? Okay. Counsel Rafferty, you can come to the mic, sir.
Thank you. Actually, in reading through the reports, I found the propensity of the crimes to be against truck drivers, not that they brought their element, but their trucks were being broken into while they were there. Some of them were the delivery men at the site, which would assume to me, if I've gotta deliver to your store, I'm not too excited about that delivery, because they're being robbed left and right. The other was prostitution, drug paraphernalia, gambling. I did see a report in here about illegal gambling operations as well. And so I, I would be extremely interested in how you're gonna beef up security to not only protect the integrity of your business, but the trucks that do business at your property as well.
Well, we added definitely more lightings to the location with the new LED lights that we got. We put at least six to 10 lights outside. And what we're doing now, overnight after we close the business, we're leaving our canopy lights on, on both sides, the diesel side and the gas side, so that gives more lighting. And as far as the delivery trucks, I don't think there were no vendors that got robbed. What tends to happen is we have a sign there that there's no parking overnight posted all over, and we have a pilot next to us, and what happens is pilot gets full, and when it gets full, they all-
Overflow.
-overcome here, and even though we have signs posted after we close and we leave the lights open, they just tend to park there and sit there and whatever they have to do after we're not there. Till we are there, we make sure there's no park there. We even went to a point where we put signs and barricades saying there's a $20 overnight parking fee, so nobody parks there, because nobody wants to pay $20 to park their truck. But after we close, they just go around and, and park there. And we have no trespassing signs that we just posted up. We painted the, the place up, added more cameras. Before, there were no cameras at the parking spaces, but now we also added cameras on the parking, facing the trucks that are parked there, rather than only the entrance and exit of the business. So that tells the truckers that if they're doing illegal in the truck or outside the truck, they are being monitored with night vision cameras.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, yeah, well, and again, the perpetrators were the truck drivers, because they were parking illegally on somebody's property. We didn't want them there.
Right.
So just wanna be clear about that. They may have been victims, but they are parking illegally-
Right.
-on somebody's property.
Right, and, and most of the trucks are, are out of state trucks that have delivery loads in the morning, and few times we even put barricades, they would just break, and just eighteen wheeler trucks. And we spent so much money, because every few weeks we would put something there to block them, and a few days later, it's either gone or it's knocked down.
Right, and what I've suggested to him, that he needs to meet with Captain Blanton, and so we ought to be able to keep people off of people's private property, you know, that are not wanted there. So you need to steal, and I need to, you know, we need to have some understanding that you've contacted Captain Blanton to get some more patrol in that area, or you might even add, add security-
Security, yeah, yeah, which we're in the process of doing, yeah.
...to your, your business. But we gonna be watching, and I told you, I go to neighborhood meeting-
Right, right.
-over there.
Right.
Counsel London and I used to share that area, but I'm gonna have him watching too, because he gotta go down 78 to get home, so we're gonna be watching you. You got two councils watching.
Sure, I, I understand that.
All right. I'll give it to you, Ms. President. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your name.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So I understand this is on Bankhead Highway, is that right?
Right, ma'am.
Okay, I, I must admit, to be very candid with you, the incident report, you just can't get away from that. And, and so I understand about who the real perpetrators are, but that brings this question to me. How are you enforcing? See, I see the sign being posted, I get that. We got signs posted over there on the eastern area too, Ms. Rafferty, and they get ignored. What enforcement do you have in place that when those, those folk who have been mentioned, that when they don't obey the law, what do you do? What, what is the system that you have in place?
The, the system we have is that, you know, we have a, a, a security, a daytime security guard that works for us, excuse, a, a daytime security guard that works for us, is, and after we close, that's the only thing that we're working on now, hiring somebody overnight to overlook the lot, then when we are closed, if something happens there. Now, how we handle it is that the guard warns whoever's not supposed to be on the lot a few times, and then if they don't listen, or if they're still nuisance, then we have to, no choice but to call the police.
So are you using a security guard or Birmingham police?
Security guard first, and then if it needed be, then we get the police involved if it's not handled by the security guard.
Well, the reason why I'm asking is because a security guard has no arresting authority.
Right, but at least he's there for, for, for trespassing, if somebody's there that not supposed to be there, if people are walking around, ladder, and just waiting around for people to pull up, or truck drivers to come in or go out, for that kinda reason, because sometimes we are busy inside that we cannot see the whole lot and go outside constantly and keep telling them to get off the lot. So that's why the guard is there, and maybe, what I've noticed is by hiring the guard, it makes, it has more effect because of just him being in uniform and telling them that, hey, if they're not off the lot, then they will get arrested.
Okay, let, let me just say this, sir, because this is not directed at you, but it is about you. So I wanna talk like, as though you're not in the room, because I only have a couple more seconds left.
Sure, sure.
I, I will say this, Mr. Chair, and to the council. We have a lot of eighteen wheeler trucks who decide that they wanna park even on the eastern side of Birmingham, and most of the activity, I noticed that you said the security guard is there during the day, but streetwalking activity happens at night, okay? So I'm just gonna be upfront with you. I'm not in support of it, just because it seems to me that there is no real mechanism in place that's going to serve as a real deterrent, because most people take security guards for a joke. But if they got the Birmingham Police Department, and you're hiring an off-duty police officer, then that presents more of a, it may cost you a little bit more money, and I'm gonna finish on this note, but I do know the type of activity that truck drivers won't own a parking lot in the back, that's not gonna happen, not really, during the day. So, Mr. Chair, that's all I had to add about that. Thank you.
Another councilman?
All right, we're ready to vote, Ms. Clark.
I need a motion.
We, it was, it was a motion.
Did you get a, a?
Yeah, it was a motion, and it was Abbott, Roberson, I believe.
Okay. Voting should be open.
Ms. President?
Yes.
May I ask this question to the motion? Do you mind?
Yeah.
Okay. If this license is approved, are there any kinda cue conditions that we can put to make sure that?
Go ahead.
There's none?
Attorney?
No.
Okay, so, so, okay. Yes, sir.
All right. Okay, Counselmember Rafferty. Thank you. That vote should be up.
President? That item passes with two no votes. Next item?
We have items five and six been requested to be withdrawn.
Okay.
We have item fifteen next.
Okay.
On page nine, in order to further amend the capital fund budget for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2015, by transferring $72,000 from Gene Road, Reed Road, and appropriating $72,000 to Sacred Hollow Road Improvements.
Ms. President, I move approval.
Abbott, Roberson. All right, do we have any speakers to this item? Counsel Scales?
Thank you, Ms. President. The reason why I wanted to at least ask for this item to be delayed, I have the map that we were given in regard to, there's an issue that I don't know if you all are aware of in regard to this Gene Reed Road shoulder. In the neighborhood that Counselor Rafferty and I actually share, which is the Huffman Neighborhood Association, I really wish, Counselor, you could have heard this family that's right there in that shoulder, that they have their child's bedroom, which the child is under one, and this, and, and they had an accident where the person was speeding so fast along that shoulder that the car almost went into the bedroom where this child is located. This came out of the Huffman, and that's why I'm giving you a point of reference. And so we thought that perhaps with your generous recommendation, that, that this would solve this public safety issue, which by the way, on behalf of you and myself, I actually passed this out in the neighborhood, because the mayor's office gave us this and told us that the project would be completed according to what's in writing on May 2015. And now we're talking about moving that money and putting it toward another project when this clearly presents a safety issue. I am respectfully asking at least to be permitted, whether there be a one-week delay or a two-week delay, so that I can have the opportunity, as the council member who shares that area as well, to be able to go and speak to this property owner. I understand that that's what the issue is. The property owner just said that they decided not to. Well, that's, that's not to say is not unbelievable, but I'd like to speak to the property owner in question myself, and to see what can be done, because it clearly is a public safety issue. So if, if, if the Patriot Councilor that has a part of that district, if they wanted to do the same, I would extend the same courtesy, Counselor, just because I understand that we both would want to be accountable to our constituents. And in that neighborhood meeting, Mr. President, I did in fact pass something out, and here's a copy of it. All council members can see it, and it absolutely says the city's commitment to, to do that particular shoulder of the road. So if there was some kinda change order, I think it would have been very courteous if, if I had gotten that, so that when I'm also talking about things that the Patriot Council member, a part of her area, we both share Gene Reed Road, then that could have been talked about. And I think that, that that would be in order, just as a courtesy, Counselor, if I could be able to speak to this gentleman before the money is removed from that particular project. Thank you, Ms. President.
Counsel Rafferty?
Thank you. This money actually resulted from the District Two bond allocation in 2013. It was in direct response to a request by a gentleman along a portion of Gene Reed Road that's in District One, but on both sides of this gentleman's property is District Two, and it was a safety issue. It was a specific allocation for a very specific project on, that would encompass the taking of right-of-way access to put a shoulder in. We have been working for three years on this project. We got everything down to the proposal to the property owner. I'll be more than happy to give you the, the property owner's information, so you could contact them directly. They met with Mr. Dawkins, they met with Mr. Bittes, and they met with the East Precinct Captain to discuss the finals on this, because the property owner did not want the project that was being proposed by the city, and I'll let Mr. Bittes give that report as well. At that point in time, the project was dissolved, and so that money, which is District Two bond money, is now being moved to an emergency project, another roads project that Mr. Bittes is working on in District Two. And I'll let Mr. Bittes conclude with the formal meeting that went on three weeks ago, I believe it was. This was a District Two bond project, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Bittes.
Yes, ma'am. This project came to us from a couple years ago from, about a speeding issue in that, in that, on that street. As you know, it is a narrow two-lane road. The property owner that's on the curve came to the city, and Counsel Rafferty asking for some funding to basically widen the shoulder and also possibly install a guardrail around that curve. to basically widen the shoulder and also possibly install a guardrail around that curve. So we went through the design phase of this, and we developed plans for us to do this work. When we met with the property owner, because we have to acquire right-of-way from their property to basically widen the shoulder, to basically minimize if somebody gets off the road, minimize the distance between the street and his house. He indicated that he will not allow us to get an easement out of his property, and he said that he does not want this project to happen. All his concern was when he submitted that request for him to slow down traffic. In this case, this project will not do this. This is just a protection for his house, but he decided not to do this. So we met with him, and I believe his wife, and the captain from that precinct, and Mr. Dawkins. And he actually requested, instead of doing this project, go ahead and just make, improve police enforcement on that street and start ticketing people to slow down the cars around that curve. And I believe that the captain from the precinct, he's been doing that. So really, this came from the owner that actually asked for the widening of the shoulder, but now he decided not to pursue this project.
Councilor Scales, one second time?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, let me just say this. I understand everything that has been said, unfortunately, is being said in the council meeting, because I was not a part of it, didn't know anything about it, would have never told the Huffman community. And I will make sure that Councilor Rafferty, that you get credit for that. Because all I knew, according to what you told me, Mr. Bittes, and not to get on you, because this is a council issue. And the bottom line was that when we talked about the projects that were in District One, then that's the very reason why we went ahead and shared it with the community, so that they would know. Now, being that I did not know, I'm not gonna hold up this process, because the counselor has mentioned that she doesn't want to do it. And I'm going to respect that. And even in regards to the property owner, Counselor, I appreciate you wanting to give me the information. But, Mr. Bittes, I will respectfully ask if you can give me the information. And any other project that goes on in District One, I would like to be afforded the courtesy that when these meetings are taking place, not up here on the dais where I'm told what the property owner says, because I will be very candid with you to tell you that this has been discussed several times in the meeting, Councilor Rafferty, that you don't attend. So I wanted them to know that you cared enough to use some of your funding to be able to do it. So I will absolutely give you the credit, ma'am, for that. And we can proceed, Mr. Protem, with an up or down vote. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Did you have, you want to speak for a second time? Go ahead.
I just wanted to denote that when we went before the Huffman Neighborhood originally with these bond projects, and Counselor Scales, I will refresh your memory, that I had reminded a number of times stated that this project, for this small piece of property that was in District One, surrounded on either sides by District Two, that this money was being allocated for a project in District One, but it was a safety issue that impacted both districts. But because the project has been canceled by the property owner, as well as the recommendation from PEP, Traffic Engineering, and the East Precinct, we're gonna move it to address a security, another public safety issue in the district expeditiously before somebody gets killed at the other side as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Scales, you wanted to speak to the Protem?
No, sir. Councilor Rafferty is gonna get all the credit for it. That's all I wanted to say. I'm ready to vote, Mr. President. Thank you.
All right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting should be open. That vote should be up.
All right, that item passes with one no vote from Councilor Scales. Next item?
Should be item eighteen.
Item, go ahead, Mr. Clerk. Item eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, all those, eighteen through thirty.
Item eighteen, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham Business License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS five forty-one, Schedule ninety-eight. Item nineteen, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham Business License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended by NAICS five sixty-one, Schedule seventy-nine. Item twenty, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham Business License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended by NAICS five twenty-four, Schedule one thirty-eight B. Item twenty-one, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS six twenty-one, Schedule one eighty-six. Item twenty-two, in order to amend Article One, section one fifty-six of the City of Birmingham License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three, annual business licenses. Item twenty-three, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham Business License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS five twenty-three, Schedule thirty-one A. Item twenty-four, in order to amend the Article One, amend Article One of the City of Birmingham Business License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS six twenty-one, Schedule one ninety-eight. Item twenty-five, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS five forty-one, Schedule sixteen. Item twenty-six, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham License Code as adopted by ordinance ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS five forty-one, Schedule fourteen. Item twenty-seven, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham Business License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS two thirty-six, two thirty-seven, two thirty-eight, Schedule sixty-eight, sixty-seven, sixty-nine, seventy, and seventy-one. Item twenty-eight, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS five thirty-one, Schedule two fourteen. Item twenty-nine, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham Business License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS five forty-one, Schedule two forty-six. And, item number thirty, in order to amend Article One of the City of Birmingham Business License Code as adopted by ordinance number ninety-seven dash one eighty-three as amended in NAICS six twenty-one, Schedule three twenty.
That's it?
Is there another?
Mr. President?
Okay.
I move approval.
Second?
This is for unanimous consent?
Yes.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right, items before us, these items are before us. We need another mover in a second.
I move approval.
All right, items eighteen through thirty are before us. Counselor Abbott?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, you know, shortly after this mass doubling of the business license fees, I began to get calls from constituents and business people in Birmingham wanting to know what the heck we thought we were doing. And that wasn't exactly how they said it. And I'm sure that we lost a lot of those businesses, because I told them that the city was working on fixing the error that we had made by the doubling without thinking. And I'm sure that some of those people finally gave up. And I just want to commend the mayor and Tom Barnett and whoever else worked on this for finally getting it right. Because you can't just willy-nilly double business licenses with no consideration of what it's going to do to the businesses. And some of them packed their bags and moved to the surrounding municipalities, of which we have thirty-five, because they didn't want to deal with Birmingham's mess. I am so happy to see this get fixed. I hope we fixed enough of them to make at least the majority feel like they're not just being taken to the cleaners by the City of Birmingham. That's one of the wackiest things that the city has ever done, and I'm glad to see that we're fixing it. I mean, it's probably not, well, it's probably worse than even the parking meter issue. But I just thank Mr. Barnett and the mayor and all of his staffers who worked on this, because this is long, long overdue. Thank you.
Councilor Scales?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I wasn't a council member here, but I was obviously affected by what was done. I did tell Counselor Abbott what you said, but, you know, I'm learning continuously that we always say that we are a continuous body, so somebody had to, I don't know, did we vote on it? Okay, so I'm glad that the council and the mayor decided to correct the wrong, because that's what happened. I mean, that's why I wanted to make sure that, did the council vote on it? Because council set policy for the city. So I'm glad this council, and I hope, Mr. President, a hint to the why should be sufficient. Hopefully, that this will become a public relations moment, that the council corrected an action that the mayor and that council at the time took, because a lot of businesses did decide to leave the City of Birmingham, and rightfully so. Now, what I hope will happen, and this is more commentary than anything, that, Mr. President, that we will find a way, Mr. Barnett, to begin to wean ourselves off of that doubling of the license tax, and that we will behave ourselves accordingly, so that we can stay within budget. And that's so appropriate, being that we're in budget time. And so I wanted to say, Mr. President, that I hope that we will publish. I don't know what the city is going to do to publish it, but I do hope that we do publish it, Mr. Chair of Economic Development, because I think that some people that may have not been friendly toward Birmingham in the past will now embrace economic development initiatives, Mayor's Office of Economic Development, that people, that will be published, where folk will know that that change order has been made. And now we will become more competitive. So when people talk about Birmingham, they won't just look at ten percent. They'll say, you know what, they corrected a wrong and made it right, and now I'll consider Birmingham like we haven't in the past. So thank you, Mr. President. And I think that, under your new paradigm, that you can say that you successfully made that happen. Thank you so much.
Counselor Hoyt?
Yes. You know, one of the things that, that hopefully we can appreciate it as a city is one thing, we have a continuing body. The other is that we have institutional knowledge. And the comments I've heard this morning were not heard when it was first presented to this council, that we passed it unanimously to increase the licenses.
No.
And not only that, but we also benefited from it, because we all got a million dollars to spend in our district. And I don't recall anybody being short on that, spending that million dollars. So, but, you know, but the only, the only problem with what we did is what we did not follow up with, and that was that it was sunset. And now it's come to that point that we are doing something different. And matter of fact, if I recall correctly, BBVA signed on to it. Matter of fact, we even had some business folks who even came to that meeting, Counselor Scales, and said, we agree, because the city was in trouble at that time financially. So, you know, we got to get prudent to innovation, because I'm gonna tell you this. We wouldn't be doing half the stuff we're doing right now if it wasn't for a Larry Langford, a Mayor Larry Langford. Not the hotel, not any of these things, Crossplex, any of these things. And I don't have to defend him, I just have to tell the truth. And the truth self-set you free. We benefited greatly as a city, it added to our coffers, and we were able to do some things that we had not done traditionally. And now it's sunsetted, and that's a good thing, too. And so all those who said they left would come back. And any of those who thought about leaving would eventually stay. So that's where we are, and it is a new paradigm. And so, Mr. President, you can take credit, and this council, for doing the right thing, and the mayor. But it is a collective. No one person has done this. We had to agree on it. So that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Mr. Protem?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I've got my history lesson this morning for my colleagues, and I do appreciate you all bringing us, bringing us up to speed as a continuous body of governing in this, participating in this city. And I do believe it's been beneficial. But I also do believe that as we move forward, and I think about moving forward in the future of our city, for those dedicated businesses that we've had to pay these licenses for many years, that we look at some type of process of reprieve. And what I mean by that is, if you've been a dedicated business in our city for so many amount of years, and you've been dedicated in paying these license fees, we ought to give an opportunity for them to get some relief in some form or fashion. I don't know if that's something, Tom, that other cities have looked at. You know, if it's a dedicated twenty, twenty-five years of paying business license in this city, but for your dedication and being forward in your efforts, we honor those, or we give them some relief of some sort. And I think that attractiveness will help bring additional businesses back to our city. We talked about innovation, we all, a majority of us, those that were out of town, were at an announcement with the Developmental Center of BBVA Compass on yesterday. Think about what that's gonna do for our city, now that we have this push that I, I sure wish you were there, I missed you too. But this technology, and what we're talking about in a Silicon Valley-type concept, what we can do to help bring new jobs and opportunities to our city. So maybe it's a certificate, maybe it's, I heard you say that, Counselor Abbott, maybe it's a relief period of some sort, as we see more revenue coming in, Tom. But I think we need to talk about how we can attract future businesses to our city, but also give some type of cancellation or reprieve of some sort to help support those businesses that stay in the City of Birmingham. That's my forward thinking. Maybe that's the next chapter of history we'll hear about one day. Thank you.
Counselor Lundey?
Thank you, leadership. I just came back from a meeting of the Georgia Consular Corps, where all the Consular Generals from the area of Europe and Asia are in Birmingham. And they're here because their offices are in Atlanta, but they are interested in opportunities in Birmingham specifically, and throughout the state. Secretary Canfield was there, Birmingham Business Alliance was there, Sister City Commission, and Butler Snow, where the Consular General to the Republic of Germany, Michael Johnson, had put this on. And the reason I mention this is because, you know, Birmingham has to present itself as if it's open for business. And I think what we're doing as a council is in sunsetting a previous stature and bringing forth a new, and shows that we know how to take documents that are living and breathing and renovate and change and articulate those documents for a time such as this. So it is not in, without any negative light toward previous councils. It's just that as of today, our needs require a different ordinance. So I'm excited about where we're heading, and as councils that follow along after I'm gone will continue to massage and redo the tax structure of this city. So I'm excited about where we are today. I'm excited about what this presents for our area businesses. And as the Chair of Economic Development for this present council, I'm excited about what this presents for the future. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Abbott, your second time?
Yes, and it will be the last on this subject. I did want to correct something that my colleague said. I did not vote for this. It was not unanimous to double all of the business license fees. I wanted to take the time to study all of the surrounding municipalities and make sure we weren't going to exceed all of their business license fees. I didn't want to be the highest one in the county, but we didn't do that. We just went right ahead with the doubling. So I wanted to correct that, so no one would think I was up here complaining about something that I voted for. But we are a continuous body, and I'm glad that we're correcting this. And Counselor, President Protem, you know, said we should do something for these businesses. We're doing it. We're lowering their business license- We're lowering their business license fees from now until sometime in the future when the council decides to raise them again, if they do. So, um, I know that that will help to retain businesses that are on the verge of maybe going somewhere. And that's big for the city of Birmingham because, you know, we can't afford to lose any jobs. We want them all to stay here, and we want to get some new ones to come. And I think that this will help us to get new businesses to come to Birmingham with our business license fees being more balanced. Thank you.
You, Counselor Scales, your second time?
Thank you, Ms. President. I wanted to say this, too. Going back to that continuous body, so not to beat a dead horse. I want to say publicly that I think that Mayor Langford, at that time, he lived up to just what he campaigned on. He said, let's do something, and we've been doing something ever since, okay? So let's give credit where credit is due. And what the public doesn't know is that we have to rely on information that's given to the council. Because a lot of times people wonder why you vote a certain way. Well, that means because we're leaning and depending on the mayor's staff, i.e. department heads, to give us information. One thing that I hope that we do moving forward, not only under the new paradigm, but period, is count the cost yourself before you enter into a contract. If we don't have a full understanding, that's the reason why I make sure that people are repeating themselves. Because I wanted to be on the record, this is what you said. And I voted in accordance to what you presented, not what I thought, but what you presented. And so, you know, to pay how much to the previous council, then you thought you were getting what you got, and what you did, according to what Counselor Hoyt said, which is a million dollars for your district. Where everybody want to get some money for the district. But I will say this, uh, we, we are counter-skirting around the issue a little bit. But I'm gonna cautiously say it because, uh, I think it needs to be said. The neighborhoods are important. Our job as a city is to provide city services to the best of our ability. But we have to have people, uh, or businesses, not people, business organizations that bring in revenue to your city to help provide those services. Now, for the very smart, intelligent people who are in this chamber and outside of this chamber, then you understand why we're looking out for the business community. Because the business community helps the city to better serve you through city services, along with your tax dollars. That's why it's important for these businesses to come back, retain those, and to come back. Why? Because we need jobs. Jobs are also going to bring in revenue, which we call taxes. And at the end of the day, Counselor Abbott, uh, you've said this so many times, and God knows it has now resonated like never before. The government is not in the business of giving folk money. And I think we just need to say that for what it's worth. So I'm glad that, Mr. President, that we got this done today. I hope that what the council will do, as well as the entire city, is to make this public so that, uh, we don't have any assumptions of these changes out there, that we are actually broadcasting it live, that things have changed at City Hall, and that now we're becoming user-friendly so some of our streets and roads and other things in our neighborhoods can get paved. Okay? Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Counselor Hoyt?
Um, yes, my last comment. When we raised the business license, um, at that particular point in time, there had not been an increase in over 30 years. Now, the city can't operate without increasing taxes or, uh, creating new revenue streams. And it was an opportunity for us to create a new revenue stream. And quite frankly, um, I remember vividly and lucid that what happened was the mayor met with these business folk. You know, the folks at Alabama Power, uh, Regis and all these folk, and said, this is what we're gonna do. And y'all know that there had not been an increase over 30 some odd years. I remember that, like with yesterday. And they all agreed summarily. Now, granted, you're gonna have some individuals, uh, business owner, who would balk against that. But summarily, for the leadership of this city, they agreed that this is what they would do. And that's how we came, uh, to this, um, to this increase in, in the, in the doubling of the business license. So I just want people to be clear about it. Nothing was wrong with that at that particular point in time. But if, but if we're in a recruiting mode, uh, perhaps we do. But as Counselor Lundey has, uh, so eloquently articulated, that, um, the future council might decide to do it again. You don't know what, you, you know, and to say we won't do it, you know, is enough. Uh, because we may have to do it at some point. You know, uh, because our finances may not be in, in such great shape. You know, so, um, that's an option we have, and every city has or so. But we're doing the right thing, the sunset, things are moving. You know, this mayor, um, you know, hotels are, uh, being popping up in condominiums and all, you know, we got a lot of stuff to give credit to the proper folk, uh, and to give credit to this council and this mayor. Because some things already happened. I'm excited about what's going on in, uh, under the, uh, the William and Anthony Bell, uh, uh, leadership senior. And, I mean, things are happening, Tom. We appreciate that, you know? We just need to something to happen in the neighborhood. That's what I want, you know? So hopefully, when we go through this budget, we gonna see some evidence of that. Brother Parker, I see. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk. Eighteen through thirty. We can take them all with one vote unless somebody wants to separate them. Yeah.
Vote should be up.
Those items pass. Next item should be item thirty-eight.
Item thirty-eight. A resolution authorizing the mayor, on behalf of the city, to amend the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Action Plan to increase the activity of planning by up to $50,000. Establish and increase the activity of special economic development by up to thirty, uh, $730,000. Establish and increase the activity of acquisition for HUD-defined low and moderate income persons benefit by up to $600,000 to increase the activity of street improvements by up to $1,200,000 in the 2013 allocation and decrease the same activity in the 2012 allocation by up to $1,200,000 in the 213 allocation and decrease the same activity in the 2012 allocation by up to $1,200,000 and to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development any required documents relating to the amendment for the purpose of furthering the response to the April twenty-seventh, 2011 disaster.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Sir?
Okay, I had my-
Abbott, Roberson. Counselor Hoyt?
Yeah, well, yeah, my concerns is, is what I asked before, Mr. President, is to get an update. You know, you can't spend this money and not have some real plan. Now, we were all up in, in DC, and we heard what the HUD folks said, that if we don't obligate these monies, that that will be, um, that they're gonna pull the funds. I think it was 23 million or 26 million. I can't, I think it, I think it's rounded off by 26 million dollars. And this council don't know what Community Development is doing, at least I don't. And that's a lot of money to have in our coffers. And we, we don't know what they're gonna do. What, you know, I mean, uh, we also found out at that meeting that all the money doesn't have to be spent in, uh, in Pratt City. Because some folk don't want to come back there. As long as the folk who've been victimized by the storm, um, or, you know, and we can build houses in and around this whole city, quite frankly, because the whole county was a disaster area. Now, y'all can continue to let us move with no understanding of what the movement is. It has not been defined. Now, say what you want to say, um, Jim Fistermaker would update us on where we were going. Now, I don't think that we not require the same thing. Now, this council, and I asked for the Committee of the Whole to have Mr. Cologne before the committee to, you know, to understand what, what are we doing? What are the world are we doing? I got 35 houses that were, that were, um, that were, um, promised to me in Bellevue Heights. We only built seven or eight, I believe. So I'm saying there's opportunity to finish those houses with 23 million dollars and all the vacant lots, because, you know, Pratt City is a part of your district. But, you know, we could build some houses in Donomite and other places and what have you. And, and I don't, now, what, what I don't want us to do, and, and I'm all for humanitarian, what is it? Uh, Habitat Humanities. But we got other folk out here who can build houses and have a track record in building housing, quality housing. And so, uh, Mr. President, I'm not inclined to vote for this until we understand what the plan is. And we've not had that update, and I've asked for it. This ain't the first time. We need to know what are our plans. Because what I don't want to happen for us to send 23 million dollars back to HUD and we, you know, and we hadn't, we don't have a plan. Now, that, that, that need to happen. Everybody don't want to live in the same neighborhood. You know, it's like the bow, uh, and, uh, and, um, with the airport.
You wrap it up?
Okay, I'm gonna wrap it up. I'm just trying to make a, a correlation here. You know, everybody don't want to stay in the same neighborhood. You know, and so people want to live wherever they need to live. You know, this is fair housing money. Live where you want to live. You know, that's what I say. Uh, but we need to know, and there ought to be a plan for every neighborhood, because we could put housing in everybody neighborhood, every neighborhood got vacant lots. And we got 23 million dollars, we ought to be baking along those lines. We can fix it all up.
Counselor Scales?
Thank you, Ms. President. I just want to say that I, I almost ditto that. Let me just say Counselor Lundey, um, inherited, uh, a mess in District Nine. And I will just be candid with you. Uh, went over to share with some little ladies over there at a school in his district, and I absolutely got angry. Counselor Lundey, it's so unfair, 2015, you still see a disaster from 2011. At some point, you know, we just have to admit it's not working. It's not working. I mean, forget the overgrown lots. Let's just talk about the homes that were finished for being demolished, and you got an overgrown lot in the place of it. And again, I want to go back to zoning, which, Counselor Abbott, you were the zoning chair at the time. And one of the things that you would talk about is the fact that we look snaggy tooth. See, I told you, I got a very good memory, Counselor Abbott. And snaggy tooth, that was the term you used to say that when we demolished these homes, we got one home here and zero, zero there, meaning vacant lots, where you tore down houses. Counselor Parker, uh, when Mama Parker was here, i.e., you're here now. You go to Collegeville, look like a third world country. You talking about EPA. Let's talk about how we develop homes outside of the environmental issues over there. And I agree with you, Counselor Hoyt, there's enough to go around. But without a vision, the people perish. So we can't just keep on thinking that we're gonna have money to come in, and you don't have a full understanding. I understand about rise is on the uprise, it's just the fact that some council members don't know what rise really means. We've heard what it means, but what does it really mean? And you've got to get that in writing. I think it needs to be promoted. And I think that it needs to be equal opportunity for nice developments. I'm not just talking about a home just to say you took some grant money. I'm talking about these nice homes that folk want to feel like they can take pride in the community. And we got to go beyond just talking. And I'm not casting dispositions, so please don't say that Counselor Scales mean whatever. I'm telling you what I mean. I'm tired of certain neighborhoods looking like garbage. And we need to start, you know, I keep telling folk all the time, every community in the city of Birmingham would look good if you put money in it. Money, regardless of what you think, make the world go around. Even the Bible is not stupid enough not to write that money answers all things. So we get that. But we gonna have to have some kind of vision that, at the appropriate time, Mr. President, I would like to ask that this do be referred over to, um, Committee of the Whole so that we can finally get some things in place. Because I know that the council as a body wants to vote in favor of it. But just want to know what it is that you're planning on doing with 23 million dollars. Thank you, Ms. President.
Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, well, I may have misunderstood. I thought that this money had to be spent within the presidentially declared disaster area. Mr. Knox, can you answer that question? I mean, does all of this money have to be spent there that's in this item?
Yeah, that included pretty much most of the county. The critical issue is it has to be tied to long-term recovery from the disaster.
Okay, so does that limit it to the Pratt City area?
Not exactly. It's just that we have to have a definite nexus to the storm and to the damage that was caused by the storm. And, you know, while the, we've received actually two parts of funding under the disaster. The first grant was about six and a half million. And it had to be used in the declared disaster area. And it, it was not quite as specific on tying it exactly back to the storm as far as relief or recovery. The second amount was about seventeen and a half million, and it has a more strict requirement, I guess, to tie it to the recovery from the storm.
Okay, and then I had another question. On Activity Five, I think it was Activity Five in the plan. It was, I think it was about economic development of the area. And now I'm looking, and I'm not seeing what I'm questioning, so I guess I should be quiet. But I'll just, oh, here, yeah, it's in Activity Five. A, uh, SIPS manufacturing plant. What is a SIPs manufacturing plant? I couldn't find it anywhere in the documentation.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's structural insulated panel? And it's, it's a building component?
So it's a, so it's a commercial activity that is yet to come to the area?
Yes, and this is just the resolution so that we can amend the action plan. This, this is not approval of any specific project. Any project or contract that, that is put forward will come on its own to the council for approval. This is really, I guess, for lack of a better word, just maneuvering within the requirements of the grant so that we can set it up to bring the project forward. We have to get approval from HUD in an action plan to pursue different types of activities, and in this case, economic development.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Ms. Tom?
Thank you, and I think I'll try, what we're gonna say is the same, but you usually say it stronger than I did. But, um, there were tornadoes that morning as well. And, um, uh, myself and my family were at Boutwell because of the tornadoes that went through our, our residential districts in Roebuck Springs, um, of which we've seen absolutely no money invested that I can find on any recovery effort. Most of it was residential damage, but still, it was damaged nonetheless. And we would like to see money invested. And I do know, um, uh, I can't remember if where the CC's Pizza, if that was in the city or if that was in Center Point. But it did tear through that section of District One as well. And again, for District One, um, on the eastern side of Birmingham, which she usually is quite prolific in what she has to say. Neither one of those sections that were very, you don't hear a lot about what happened in the morning and the damage that, that occurred that morning. And a lot of the people that were displaced during the second storm that afternoon were hit by those tornadoes that morning and, um, still recovering from the shock by the time the second storms came over. Not to belittle what happened in Pratt City, because that was absolutely horrible. But I do think that we need to take in every section of the city that was negatively impacted by the, all of the storms that day, and I'd like to see that plan.
Thank you. I'm calling myself first time, only time. Proper planning produces proper results. Proper planning produces proper results. And excuse the expression, but piss poor planning produces poor results. What we are, um, what I'm hearing from each one of my colleagues is that we want to know what the plan is.
That's right.
Uh, Councilor Hoyt, when we were in DC, did ask that question, uh, and I just, Councilor wanted to hear from the mayor's office on, on the response, even though we already knew what the answer to the question was, uh, which is that it can be used throughout the county. They told us that in DC at our meeting. One of the problems that we are having, and we see it more and more, uh, is that, you, we are not, um, fully apprised of what the plan is.
That's right.
Uh, we know that as a council, as a body, we want to see our city grow and prosper, and we don't want to delay things that will impact, negatively impact our communities. But at the same time, we don't want to move expeditiously on things when we don't know what the full scope of the plan is. And there were other areas, uh, citywide that were impacted negatively, obviously, by the, the events in April of two thousand eleven. Planning is important when we look at our city's future, and in the absence of that, things will happen haphazardly. And some things may happen good, but the chances of them, um, being a disaster are more likely when you do not have a plan. Now, we have a Committee of the Whole meeting scheduled today at four P M., and we have already asked, um, as, as Council Hoyt also mentioned, that we, um, we have asked for a plan from Community Development on what, and, and just the full scope of the plan. Now, I am, uh, I, I hear the, the, the general consensus of the council is that we not move forward, because we want to know what the plan is, in order for all of us to move forward on one accord and on the same page. Now, again, we have a special call Committee of the Whole meeting today at four, and if, if, uh, Community Development is not prepared to address this at four, we can leave it in the Committee of the Whole until we get, uh, get this addressed. Uh, the final thing I'll say is there is a timeline on when we are to allocate and spend this money. I don't know exactly what it is, but I think that should be, uh, communicated to us as well. But again, planning is, is, is extremely important when we look at the future of our city. You can't predict ten, fifteen, twenty, and fifty years out without a plan. And so, uh, at some point, I know someone will make a recommendation to send it to Committee of the Whole, and I'm in full support of that. Council Hoyt, your second time.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. President. Let me just share with you, and Council Lundey, I want you to hear me, because I have a genuine concern about Pratt City. And I know you're the representative, uh, but it is a community that desires hope. It is a community that desires our full attention. And the only reason I raise that, that question, I mean, this, this issue, because when I went to Tuscaloosa a couple of weeks ago to my sister's birthday party, I almost got lost in a place that I was quite familiar with, is Fifteenth Street. It was so much development going on, I'm saying, what in the world are we doing? I'm just telling you, man. I'm, I'm, you know, and, and, and it has nothing, and I'm not dealing with personality, but I'm talking about planning. That place was just bustling. And they got the, almost the same amount of money that we got, and they spending their money, and they do have a plan as to what they gonna do and how they gonna build up the community. Not nilly willy, but a comprehensive plan that both the council and the mayor has agreed on, and this is how we gonna rebuild this community. Go down there, Fifteenth Street, my aunt used to stay on, I used to run up and down the, the railroad tracks. Got lost, because it's a new place. Things are happening. Homes are being built. New industries coming that way. All I'm saying, Counselor, I don't want us to lose this money. If we put twenty-six million dollars back into, well, I'd be satisfied with that. But everybody don't want to go back to Pratt City. But there ought to be some grocery stores, there ought to be some retail stores, ought to be some new houses. Not some sitting up there and nobody in them, because nobody's planning. I even said, if we build the houses, then let's do some housing counseling, so people who are not normally, uh, you know, maintain a house, would know how to maintain a house. Because you don't want to pe, set people up for failure. Some of the folk who lived in apartment could actually be homeowners now, if we had a plan, if we had a vision. So, all I'm saying, don't keep passing money that you don't know where it's going, because this is what, this is, this is a train wreck waiting to happen. And then the money goes, and we don't need to figure out who all gonna get paid. Just build a house, put the money into the house, and so we maximize the effort on behalf of these citizens. That's all. That's all that needs to happen. And I'm telling you, Tuscaloosa is on the move. Do you hear me? They are rebuilding as I speak. I'm telling you, and, and Fifteenth Street was a mostly African-American community. But I, it was. I, it, it has changed. And Pratt City is a mostly African-American community, and we ain't done nothing. I still see, uh, uh, the, the root of the trees still could be viewed from the street. I didn't see any of that when I went to Tuscaloosa.
Councilor Skiles?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, let me just say this. I'm glad Council Hoyt brought that up in regard to, um, people may not want to return, because, let me just share very quickly, uh, in, in, in our area, what happened with us, and this is not make-believe, I've actually brought it before this council. Some of the folk that lived in Pratt City in two thousand eleven moved to District One in two thousand twelve. So if you're talking about post-traumatic syndrome, imagine living in Pratt City, this is one of the calls that I got, two thousand twelve, particularly District One, was hit by a tornado that nobody really wanted to talk about. Came here and even begged the mayor to declare a disaster area. So imagine, you already leaving from a disaster to go live somewhere else where another disaster happens. The business that, one of the businesses that came to mind in my area particularly was Onwinewood Road, it was called Securities First, a credit union. They had to rebuild on their own. And so when you're talking about a plan, uh, and, Mr. President, I, I, I'm, I'm glad the course of action that you're taking today, because I remember that when we first talked about putting up this ten million dollars, you were very much in support of it, because you believed that that would help the Pratt City area. So I'm glad to know that you're taking that position today, that you're saying that we're gonna wait, because I also came back and told this council, Tuscaloosa is growing by leaps and bounds. What are they doing that Birmingham is not? And the proof is in the tasting of the pudding. My daughter just graduated down there in Tuscaloosa a year ago. So I saw the development. I couldn't believe when my daughter told me, Ma, they got lofts being built on MacFarland. I just couldn't believe it, until I went down there and I saw it. And I'm just telling you that we, I, I, I'm, I'm not, I don't want to even delaborate the point, all I want to say is, Mr. President, I'm, I'm really hoping that we stay the course until we actually have a plan that is conducive throughout this city, because I believe that if we're smart, we'll redevelop the city without the city having to put up all of the costs, because now you got the federal government that's willing to help us. And I know that if we do it the right way, that, Mr. President, under the new paradigm, that there will be some things that we can say, I was a part of that movement, because none of us are destined to be here, I don't know why we may sometimes think we are. We guaranteed to be at the door at City Hall. So that's the reason why it's imperative that the decisions that you make now, that you can live with it after the fact. So I thank you, Mr. President, uh, and I hope that we will leave it in Committee of the Whole, and don't allow external factors to, to take us away from that. We need that to happen. And even with the time sensitivity, I hope that don't come before the council say, well, let's go on and vote it out, because it's time sensitive, because we'd heard that before too. But we, we are four years down the road, and here it is April of two thousand fifteen, and we can't say that we blessed District Nine to be able to do what they need to do in the city at large. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Lundey?
You're out of order, sir. You're out of order. Please, you know you're out of order. Council Lundey, close us out.
I, um, I first want to say I look forward to hearing the details of an implementation plan as well as a housing plan, um, as the counselor for Pratt City. I can tell you that since I took office, I have been working on a housing plan that is currently in Community Development. I was surprised to see a plan presented at our retreat that I had no knowledge of for Pratt City. Uh, I didn't say anything then, but I'm gonna say something now, um, because the gentleman who presented the plan is fully aware of the plan that he and I, I thought were working on together. But he presented something contrary to what we had been working on. So, we need an implementation plan, not just for Pratt City, but citywide. We need a housing update, not just for Pratt City, but citywide. You know, there, there are some folks who are very trustworthy, hardworking, and bona fide, just good at their job within City Hall. But there are some folks here who are in positions, who you wonder how in the world did they get there? I've never seen people lead projects without any project management experience. There's no one here who has a P M P, who knows Kaizen, Lean, any of the project management, Six Sigma methodologies, there's not a black belt in the building. I never seen anything like it. And we're leading multi-million dollar projects without project experience. And we wonder why the baseball stadium went over? We wonder why the Negro League Museum is already over budget?
Oh, my Lord.
We got folks in here who ought to be shaming themselves. I said this the first week I came, and I reiterate it, this city needs an enema. We got to do better. And white folks ain't doing this to us.
That's right.
Us doing this to us. And we want to point fingers, but you got to remember the other three pointing back at you. It's us, folks. Shame on us. Now, we know, hold on, hold on, hold on, cutting into my time. We know that this money can be used citywide. We know this.
We know that.
I have no problem with this money being used citywide. I just want to see a plan that we gonna be able to use citywide that benefits Pratt City. That's all. I think that's fair. I am so Pratt City. That's a community that has taken me in and has loved on me, and I want to love on it. But I'm not gonna do it haphazardly without a plan. So, I challenge my colleagues in Community Development to present us at the appropriate time today, or whenever it is, a plan. I asked my colleagues to bring in personnel, whether it be outside consultants, who can manage a process and keep something on time and under budget. That's all I ask. If this were the business community, this would not exist. I am a capitalist first and a statesman second. I am not a politician. I could walk away from this tomorrow. But while I'm here, I'm gonna do the right thing. And I'm gonna run this race, run this lap around this track, and I'm gonna hand this baton off to somebody else. I'm not a, a lifer for this. I need y'all to hear me on public record. I'm just here to make a difference and move on. So whoever running for district now, y'all can get ready. But Lundey gonna be here to do the right thing while he's here, and then I'm out.
That's right.
Thank you, leadership.
Thank you. We're ready to, um, vote. We have a motion?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Go ahead.
My motion is that we delay this item, uh, for Committee of the Whole.
You want to refer? All right, we have a second?
Second.
All right, we're ready to vote on referral to Committee of the Whole.
One second, please.
Mr. President, do we also need to note, uh, in this motion that it is to remain in, in Committee of the Whole until we receive the information requested?
We don't have to do that.
We don't have to?
Just keep it.
All right.
Well, and, Mr. President, my, my only, um, concern would be, if we've not seen a plan up until this point, they don't have a plan today. Okay, so, uh, then these will be a time for them to get themselves together.
We'll just keep it in Committee of the Whole until we are.
Okay, okay, very good. Okay, because I don't want evident words. I'm tired of that, you know, I can speak something myself.
We're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk, on referring it to Committee of the Whole.
That vote should be up.
That item passes, next item?
Should be item forty-nine, requested to be withdrawn.
Sixty-two, sixty-three, and sixty-four.
Item sixty-two, page twenty. A resolution setting a public hearing made the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen to consider the adoption of a resolution assending to the vacation of eight hundred square feet of air rights in thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and fourteen square feet of block four forty-one alley that runs parallel to and between Sixth Avenue South and Seventh Avenue South, and perpendicular to, in between Twenty-Ninth Street South and Thirtieth Street South, on behalf of Passata Birmingham LLC owner, so that the owner can construct the new metropolitan apartments. Case number S U B two thousand and fifteen dash thirteen. And item sixty-three, a resolution setting a public hearing made the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, to consider the adoption of a resolution assending to the vacation of seven hundred and one square feet of subsurface rights along Nineteenth Street South and Twentieth Street South, and two thousand and fifty square feet of subsurface rights along Third Avenue South and the Third Avenue South Alley, on behalf of Thystone Flowers LLC, Housing Authority of Birmingham District, Greek Orthodox Church of E T C, and Aslan Event, and Investment Company LLC owners, so that the construction footings for the proposed downtown Publix can be installed underneath the city right away. Case number S U B two thousand and fifteen dash fifteen. Item sixty-four, a resolution setting a public hearing made the twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, to consider the adoption of a resolution assending to the vacation of two thousand square feet of the unopened block two twelve alley that runs parallel to and between Fifth Avenue North and Seventh Avenue North, and perpendicular to and between Twenty-Eighth Street North and Red Mountain Expressway, U S Highway thirty-one, U S Highway two eighty, on behalf of W J J LLC owner, so that the owner can utilize the property for outside storage. Case number S U B two thousand and fifteen dash sixteen.
All right, we have a mover and a second.
Mr. President, I move approval.
Second.
Who was the second, I'm sorry?
Roberson.
All right.
Abbott Roberson.
All right, voting should be up for those items.
All right. This is a resolution setting public hearings for?
Councilmember Hoyt.
Sixty-two, sixty-three, and sixty-four.
That vote should be up, Mr. President.
Those items pass. Next item is clerk call of item sixty-five, sixty-six, those are the addendum items, sixty-seven, sixty-eight.
Okay. Item sixty-five?
And, yeah.
A resolution approving the following. A resolution approving the following expense accounts. Jonathan Austin, Councilor, City Council, Montgomery, Alabama, six hundred and five dollars and fifty cents October sixteenth through the eighteenth, two thousand and fourteen to attend Leadership Alabama Opening Retreat. Emily Frost, Assistant to the Mayor's Office, Santana...
Santa.
Santa, I'm sorry. Santa, yeah, of course. Santa Barbara, California, two thousand, two hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. February the twenty-third through the twenty-seventh, two thousand and fifteen to attend Grantmanship Training Program. Stephen Hoyt, Councilor, City Clerk. No, that's wrong. That's a typo, City Clerk. Councilor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, two hundred and eighty dollars and ninety-four cents January twenty-first through twenty-second. Two thousand and fifteen to attend Environmental Protection Agency Federal Interagency Meeting. Courtney Hunter, Committee Assistant, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, four hundred and, uh, four hundred dollars and ninety-four cents January twenty-first through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen to attend Environmental Protection Agency Federal Interagency Meeting. Tania Jackson, Communications Operator, Mayor's Office, Orlando, Florida, one thousand, seventy-three dollars and eighty-two cents, February eighteenth, twentieth, two thousand and fifteen to attend Social Media for Communicators Conference. Gregory Jones, Assistant to the Mayor, Mayor's Office, Atlanta, Georgia, ninety-two dollars and ninety-six cents January twenty-first and the twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen to attend Environmental Protection Agency Federal Interagency Meeting. Cheryl Kidd, Council Administrator, City Council, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars and forty-two cents, March the fourth through sixth, two thousand and fifteen to attend People and Places, two thousand and fifteen, Community Conference. Cheryl Kidd, Council Administrator, City Council, Prattville, Alabama, one hundred and thirty-seven dollars and thirty-six cents March twenty-sixth through the twenty-eighth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Council Retreat. McCary Malden, Chief Service Officer, Mayor's Office, Orlando, Florida, four hundred and ninety dollars and fifteen cents February seventeenth through the twentieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend two thousand and fifteen Cities Service Convening. McCary Malden, Chief Service Officer, Mayor's Office, Washington District, Columbia, ninety, nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars and forty-one cents February twenty-fifth into twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Opportunity Nation Summit. Item sixty-six, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Cheryl Kidd, Administrator, City Council, Montgomery, Alabama, four hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-seven cents April the twenty-second into twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Reach Alabama Association of Nonprofits. Melanie Martin, Community Resource Representative, Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars made the nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. William Parker, Councilor, City Council, Atlanta, Georgia, seven hundred and twenty dollars and thirteen cents April the twenty-second through the twenty-fourth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend EPA Meetings. Susan Perma, Palmer, Community Resource Representative, Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars made nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Kathy Purdue, Senior Community Resource Representative, Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars made the ninth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Sue Scarborough, Assistant to the Mayor's Office, Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, one thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars made the nineteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Michael Shine, Community Resource Representative, Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars made the nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. Broncey Underwood, Community Resource Representative, Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, one thousand, six hundred and nine dollars made the nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. And Item sixty-seven, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. Tony Carson, Assistant to the Mayor, Mayor's Office, Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, two hundred and six dollars April twenty-eighth through May the second, two thousand and fifteen, to attend two thousand and fifteen Cities United. Terry Burney, Chief Administration Analyst, Mayor's Office, Houston, Texas, two thousand, seventeen dollars and twenty-four cents made the nineteenth through the twenty-third, two thousand and fifteen, to attend Neighborhood USA Conference. And Item sixty-eight, a resolution approving the following advanced expense accounts. April Odom, Director of Communications, Mayor's Office, Washington District, Columbia, one thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars made the twenty-seventh through the thirtieth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend African American Mayor's Association Annual Conference. April Odom, Director of Communication, Mayor's Office, Memphis, Tennessee, uh, zero, no dollars June the second through the fifth, two thousand and fifteen, to attend National Association Government Communicators.
All right. We're gonna need a mover and a second. All right. Counsel Skills.
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I typically don't have a problem with what's before us, but I, I am, I don't understand. On Item sixty-eight, the second one, if it's zero dollars, why are we even considering it?
You still have to.
We still have to consider it?
Yeah, when she's, when, uh, when she's traveling or any of us are traveling on city, um, for the city, even if it's, if it's no cost, it still has to be approved to travel, even if it's zero cost. It happens from time to time.
And so that you're covered by insurance as well.
Right. You're protected by city.
Okay. All right.
All right. Uh, we're ready to vote, Mr. Clerk.
Voting should be up.
Councilmember.
Okay. That vote should be up, Mr. President.
That item is approved. One no vote from Counsel Abbott. I have one, um, additional travel item that didn't make it. It's, uh, so I'll have to be for unanimous consent. It's for, uh, Counsel Tyson, City Council, Mobile, Alabama, three hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents April twenty-second through the twenty-fifth to attend the two thousand and fifteen Regional Justice Leadership Conference. Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. Go ahead and move it. Move down. Move the item.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
All right. That passes. All right. Uh, next, we have, uh, let's move to suspend the rules for our speakers.
So move.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
All right.
All opposed?
First speaker.
Uh, Theo Hawthorne.
Mr. Hawthorne.
Is that the insurance man?
Go on up. State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Theo Hawthorne. I reside at twenty-six seventy-three Hawthorne Lake Road, Helena, Alabama, three five zero two two. And yes, Theo Hawthorne is my dad.
Okay.
Absolutely. Uh, I'm excited to be here. I wanted to talk about an event that I am bringing to Birmingham known as the Alabama Greek Nick Weekend, two thousand and fifteen. The Alabama Greek Nick is gonna, uh, consist of all of the N P H C fraternity and sorority organizations coming to Birmingham, um, to participate in activities. Uh, we're gonna utilize city facilities. The event's gonna be held on Friday, May twenty-ninth, and also Saturday, May thirtieth. This is a statewide roll call. In essence, all of the collegiate and alumni chapters from across the state of Alabama are being invited, uh, to participate in these festivities here in Birmingham. Uh, that's gonna be a huge, uh, economic impact for the city just due to, um, the way that we're marketing, uh, this event and it, and the attendees having to reside in Birmingham, uh, over the weekend for the festivities. I'm asking for the city of Birmingham to strongly consider partnering, uh, with this event. There are certain aspects of, uh, this event that are really, um, appealing. The job fair, obviously, uh, is gonna draw, uh, employers from all over the state. The tailgate, um, being utilized at Legion Field on Saturday is gonna be full of activities, uh, for these, uh, Greek organizations to showcase unity. Also, there's a community service, uh, project involved that, uh, that involves a nonprofit organization by the Community Furniture Bank. Uh, and there's also gonna be a charity piece, uh, to raise money for a selected charity, um, for this event as well. I'm asking, you know, obviously, for the city to strongly look at this. I'm not just some random promoter that's trying to bring a new event to the city. I've done some pretty big events here, uh, in the past. My most recent project being a concert, uh, at Fair Park Arena, um, last Mother's Day. So, um, I do have, um, uh, some material and an actual proposal, uh, that I can distribute, uh, via electronic email to all of the councilmen who wish to, uh, review it. But, um, I have some pretty big sponsors and some pretty big job fair attendees that are really on the fence and pretty close to signing an agreement with this event if I can get the city of Birmingham to, to stamp it. Thank you.
All right. Next speaker. Thank you. Next speaker. You're gonna give us the information. Maureen? Maurice Coleman? Maureen?
I don't still see. I think it's Maureen. Okay. I think Mr. Casey wanted to be removed, so Magnolia Cook, as well as Annie Bryant, wanted to be removed. Oh, I'm sorry. She's coming up.
Ms. Cook?
That's Ms. Co... That's Ms. Coleman?
Ms. Coleman? State your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Okay.
Pull the mic down. You can pull the mic down.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Maureen Coleman. I live at nine eleven Eighteenth Street, Ensign. I'm the newly elected president of the Tuxedo area. We are before the council to ask that eighteen nineteen, Eighteenth Street, be torn down. Mr. Larry Plon resides at eighteen seventeen, Eighteenth Street. He is afraid for his life at eighteen nineteen, next to him, of catching on fire. No utilities on, drugs and sex activities are going on. We ask the council to please tear down this house. Mr. Plon worked in the daytime. He has complained for over five years about this house. Officer Tolliver went by and smelt the stench outside. Mr. Chris Mosley went back to check. He witnessed people going in and out of a vacant house. Mr. Henry from the city took our complaints. Their hands are tied. So, this is the death trap next to Mr. Plon. People use the outside with human feces and urine on the outside. And then on the inside, they use sex and drugs. This house, we were told, had a strong structure and was not to be torn down. We are before you to consider for a human life that's next door to a death trap. The house has been vacant for years. The owner and parents deceased, and their son is on drugs, and he lives somewhere else. Thank you for your time to listen to our complaint for a human life, Mr. Larry Plon.
Next speaker.
Mayor Representative, City Council Officers, and citizen of Birmingham. My name is Magnolia Cook, and I'm the immediately past president of Tuxedo Neighborhood and Ensign Community. I'm here on behalf of a very serious and life-threatening problem which has been there and been through all proper challenges with no help at all. Each department state they have had their hands tied, and they can do not anything more except to go through the same challenge again. They have been very nice, though, but they say they can not do anything more. We are here to ask the whole council and mayor to come up with a solution without us having to wait five more years or until more lives are lost from drugs being sold from these empty houses. Our problem is life-threatening, and our oldest citizen, who wants to still live in their paid-for homes, would like to, for you all, to come up with some kind of solution. Thank you very much for listening to our complaints.
Counsel Lundy?
Thank you, leadership. I am... I am impressed and glad that you, uh, came to address us. When I went by that structure, I had my windows down as I pulled up. And you can smell the stench as you pull up to the house. I just gotta believe that someone here at City Hall can hear our cry. I just got to believe that somebody here cares enough to care enough about the people. When Chris told me, uh, that y'all were coming, I said, "It's about time." Because I'm gonna tell you something. People have a way of taking matters into their own hands. And I hate it for it to come to that. I'm not advocating for that. But y'all are sick and tired of being sick and tired about this spot. Ms. Cook inherited that on her watch when she came into the presidency. Now, Ms. Williams, you, you keep... Ms. Coleman, you, I'm sorry. Ms. Coleman, you carrying it on now. It's time we do something. There ought to be some type of nuisance or something that we can, uh, enact so that this house can be fast-tracked and demolished in the appropriate time. We find money for a whole lot of things around here. Seems like we can find a little money, uh, to demolish this house. There, um, are all kinds of activities going on in and around this house. But I just wish, I wish you could smell the stench. I mean, it's, it's amazing that people will go in and out of a structure like that and do who knows what inside of that structure. And the people in that community, don't let the wind start blowing. You know, and they start blowing that stench down wind, down feet, you know, down the road. It's horrible. And, uh, um, it is a gruesome sight. It's an awful sight. I'm glad you're, you're making your voices heard. I would like to ask someone who is present... I would like to ask someone who is present-